The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
All right, and now call this meeting of the city council to order. Please note that pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 orders suspended certain provisions of the open meeting law, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, as well as Merkwood Attorney's Declaration of Emergency dated March 15th, 2020. This meeting of the city council will be conducted via remote participation. We'll post an audio recording, audio/video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of these proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the City of Somerville website and local cable access government channels. Now please rise for the prayer and pledge allegiance.
Mr. President, let's begin this meeting with a prayer. God grant this city council the serenity to accept the things that cannot be changed, the courage to change the things that can be changed, and the wisdom to know the difference. And now let's join the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. And Mr. Clerk, please call a roll.
This is roll call, Councilor Niedergang.
Here.
Councilor White.
Here.
Councilor Ballantyne.
Here.
Councilor Ewan Campan.
Here.
Councilor Davis.
Here.
Councilor Strezzo.
Here.
Councilor Klingon.
Present.
Councilor Mbah.
Present.
Councilor Scott.
Present.
Councilor Rosetti.
Present.
And Councilor McLaughlin.
Here.
Mr. President, all 11 councils are present. We have a quorum.
All right, do we have any moments of silence? I have Councilor Rosetti, Klingon, and Scott.
Mr. President, thank you. I ask this evening that we please keep in our minds and memory Evelyn Adams, also known as Sis. Evelyn was born and raised in Cambridge, but did become a resident of West Somerville and remained in West Somerville for close to 50 years. She had her dog Nico, who she adored, and that dog did become blind over time, and that Nico was smothered in love and special care. Sis was simple. She was humble. She was adored by her neighbors. Donations in her memory have been asked to be forwarded to the ASPCA, and I ask that we please remember Sis this evening. Thank you.
Councilor Klingon?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, I ask that we remember Mrs. Florence E. Perro, also known as Chickie, affectionately known. She was born and raised in Somerville. She actually passed away surrounded by her daughters in on January 29th. And so Chickie was born and raised in Somerville. She actually grew up on Wheatland Street, right in Wood 4, and then, as you all know, continued to live in Wood 4 and Medford Street. She was she was the wife of the late Walter Perro, one of our former aldermen at the time, a councilman. And she she spent a lot of time down the Cape, but what she really loved is being, she was a library aide in our fair city for 15 years at the Winter Hill Community School, right here in Wood 4. And she loved her job servicing the city and the community. She also loved trivia. I know that about her. She played a lot of online trivia. And she was just a really, really, what I know of her when I've met her a few times, she was really an awesome person. And she'll sadly be missed. She she will, yeah, she could be seen walking around the neighborhood with her dog. She loved trivia, spending time on the Cape with her daughters and their grandchildren, and she will be missed by her daughter Sarah Potato and her husband Jim of North Reading, Emily Perron and her husband Michael of Wakefield. And she was the loving grandmother of Michael and Anthony Potato, as well as Julia Perron. And they will miss her dearly, and I hope we keep them in our thoughts this evening. Thank you.
Councilor Strezzo, Rosetti, Niedergang, and Ba would like to sign on, and Councilor White and Ballantyne. Councilor White, do you want to comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's my understanding that Chickie was Walter Alderman, former Alderman Walter Perro's wife. And, you know, as a former alderman, who I worked with for a number of years, this is the first I heard of it, so it sort of struck me. You know, I'm very well familiar with the family and, you know, the work that she did in the community as well. So I want to really offer my condolences to the family. And again, ask that they be kept in everyone's memory.
Thank you, and I think the whole council would like to sign on to this. Councilor Scott?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I ask tonight that we remember Daryl Tate, who passed on January 29th, just after our last meeting. Daryl was nearly 60 years old. He's survived by his sister Charlene and Cheryl, who lost their mother in 2019. Just about two years later, their brother as well. My thoughts are with them, and I hope all of us in Somerville will keep Daryl in our thoughts as well. Daryl was an icon in the neighborhood. He was unmistakable. He had love in his heart for so many of his neighbors. And the many people he'd see out in the square, he was always out in the square with his beloved canine companion Isley, the prince of Union Square. When there was a neighborhood meeting, he was there. When I walked my daughter to preschool, he was there. When someone needed help, he absolutely did what he could. He was a proud man, a proud black man. And alongside the love that he had for his neighbors, he was also angry. Angry injustices he saw in the world. I learned a lot from listening to him. His life was not easy, and he did not shy away from the truths he perceived. But he could acknowledge that anger and also embrace the love that he had for the people around him. He loved sports, loved music, he loved animals, and he was loved in great, great amount by his neighbors, who turned up to help him as well when he needed them. So there's a lot to say about him, but I'd like to yield to our colleague from Ward 3, who also lived as Daryl's neighbor for a long time. I'll just say that he will be very missed, and I ask that we keep in his thoughts. Thanks.
Councilor Ba would like to sign on, and Council Klingon and Campan?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Through you, thank you so much to Councilor Scott for remembering Daryl tonight. So I lived on Carlton Street, in the same downstairs from Daryl, for more than four years. And if you lived close to Daryl, it was impossible to not become friends. As Councilor Scott mentioned, he was he was a huge presence in the neighborhood. His dog Isley, named after the Isley brothers, and Daryl actually used to be an R&amp;B DJ, and he had the voice, you could tell. You'd see him at Fortissimo getting a cup of coffee, just absolutely chatting everybody's ears off. So, you know, I knew Daryl in one chapter of his life. I know that there were many others. And, you know, I think it's worth saying that the last few years were very difficult for Daryl, as he dealt with a lot of health issues. And, you know, the reason I bring that up is not to dwell, but just to say, Daryl is someone who would have had every excuse in the world to be angry and resentful and bitter. And he just wasn't. He I mean, he could get angry about things, but he was just the kindest, just an incredibly big spirit. And the fact that he maintained that kindness of spirit throughout, you know, the challenges that he had to deal with is just a testament to his soul. And the last thing I'll say, you know, Daryl is someone who I can't even tell how many times I would like walk away from a conversation while he was still going, because I had somewhere to be, and I would say, yeah, Daryl, Daryl. Yeah, I know, I know. I gotta go. And, you know, since he passed, I've just been thinking back on how many of those moments I wish now I could get back. You know, the last time I talked to him was just two weeks ago or something. And if I had known that that was going to be the last time we spoke, I certainly would have talked for a lot longer. So I ask that we keep his family in our thoughts tonight. Thank you.
Are there any further moments of silence? Now please rise for a moment of silence. Please be seated. And Mr. Clerk, if you can read the next item.
Item number three is the approval of the minutes of the organizational meeting on January 4th and the regular meeting on January 14th, 2021.
All right, this item was laid on the table for approval. Now, before we get into the agenda, there are a few items people have requested to take out of order. Council Niedergang requests to take items number 21, 22, 23, 25, and 74 out of order. These are all traffic common related orders. And then Councilor Rosetti would like to take items 30 and 71 out of order. They deal with confirmations and police matters and executive session. And then Council Klingon would like to take, I don't know, Council Scott would like to take item 75 out of order, which is an unreserved fund balance. Any discussion? Would anybody like any other items to be taken out of order?
Mr. President, it's Council Rosetti.
Council Rosetti.
I just want item 71 out of order, please.
Yes, I mentioned 70, 30, and 71.
No, not 30, just 71, please.
Oh, 30 is the confirmations report, so I think you need to do that first, correct?
No, sir. I just want to go to 71 before, please. Just 71.
Okay, 71 and then 30, or just not?
No. Just 71, please. Out of order, I'd like to do 71.
Okay, very good. Councilors, we will not take item 30 out of order. Council Strezzo, you had a question?
Thank you, Mr. President. So can you please repeat the numbers 21, 24?
I'll put them all in the text right now.
Super. Thank you.
22, 23, 25. Yeah, I'll just text it to everybody. Boom. All right, any further questions? All right, seeing none. Oh, and we are going to begin with the public hearings first, so we'll remain in order. So please read item number four, which is the next item.
Item number four is a public hearing on a grand location application submitted by EverSource to install 126 feet of conduit in Somerville Avenue from a manhole to a point to pick up at 471 Somerville Avenue.
All right, and now declare this public hearing open. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? Please use the little hand icon. There's a little button you can press, and I see Jackie Duffy there. I will unmute you. Jackie, you are muted.
Hi, how are you tonight?
Doing all right. How you doing?
I'm good, thank you. And we'd like to install 126 feet of conduit in Somerville Lab to provide electric service to 471 Somerville Avenue.
All right, is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? Please use the little hand icon. I'll give you a second. Going once, going twice. All right, seeing no further comment, I now declare this public hearing closed. Are there any questions or comments from the council? All right, hearing no comment. I'm going to lay this item on the table for approval.
Thank you, and thank you for taking me first.
Thank you, no problem. Next item.
Item number five is a public hearing on a grand location application submitted by Extonet to install 41 feet of conduit in the intersection of Pearl and Pinkney Streets from an EverSource manhole to a proposed new handhole, then continuing two feet to a small wireless facility node at 34 Pearl Street.
All right, and now declare this public hearing open. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? Please use the hand icon. And I see Rosanna Ferrante. Rosanna, you are muted on my side.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Good evening, council. My name is Rosanna Ferrante on behalf of Extonet, and I'm here proposing 41 feet of conduit in the intersection of Pearl and Pinkney Streets from EverSource manhole 4551 to a proposed handhole, then continuing two feet to a small cell wireless facility node at 34 Pearl Street, which was previously approved.
All right, is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? Please use the hand icon. Going once, going twice. All right, seeing no further comment, I now declare this public hearing closed. Is there any comment from the council? So this is my ward, so I'll just ask if you're planning on blocking any traffic, how long you think the project is going to last?
I think this would be a one-day project at the most, and we would, we can, we're more than happy to provide a TMP if that's required.
Okay, and are you doing any digging, or is this all underground?
Underground.
Okay, very good. Any further comment from the council? Hearing no further comment, this item was laid on the table for approval.
Item number six is a public hearing on a grand location application submitted by Extonet to install 36 feet of conduit in Pennsylvania Avenue from an EverSource manhole to a proposed handhole, then continuing two feet to a small wireless facility at the intersection of Vermont and Pennsylvania Avenues.
All right, and now declare this public hearing open. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? Is this Rosanna, I guess?
Yes, Rosanna Ferrante on behalf of Extonet. So we are proposing to install 36 feet of conduit in Pennsylvania Avenue from EverSource manhole 12344 to a proposed handhole, then another two feet to a small cell wireless facility at the intersection of Vermont and Pennsylvania Avenue. This small cell was previously approved.
All right, is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to comment on this item? Please use the hand icon. Going once, going twice. All right, and now declare this public hearing closed. Is there anyone comments from the council? This is also my ward. Same question. Any digging, any closures of the street?
Again, this is a very small underground, so we would provide a TMP if there was any issue.
Any further comment from the council? Hearing none, this item was laid on the table for approval.
Mr. President, that brings us then to the next set of items. I should read them together, I assume?
Ah, yes, let's read all the traffic-related items at once.
The first is item number 21, which is a communication submitted by Councilor Niedergang and Mbah, sharing the Somerville Alliance for Safe Streets Declaration and Call to Action, and inviting everyone to attend their virtual summit on February 28th from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. Item number 22 is a resolution submitted by Councilors Niedergang and Mbah that the mayor dedicate resources as a supplementary fiscal 21 budget request and propose in the FY22 budget to create a Department of Transportation with at least three new additional full-time staff, including a senior position and power to coordinate this work across departments, possibly known as a chief of streets. Item 25, 23 is a resolution submitted by Councilors Niedergang and Mbah that the mayor direct department heads to prioritize the rapid construction of physical infrastructure to slow traffic, protect our most vulnerable residents, and bring our streets into compliance with the ADA in order to address the killing of four pedestrians by motor vehicles in the last two years and prevent further traffic fatalities. Item number 25 is an order submitted by Councilor Scott that this council discuss FY22 funding and organizational priorities for the mobility department. And then item 71, I'm sorry, item 74 is a communication from the public. It's 221 citizens from the Somerville Alliance for Safe Streets who have submitted a declaration and call to action regarding safe streets.
All right, Council Ballantyne requests to sign on to 21, 22, 23, and 25. Council Davis on item number 23, and I will recognize Council Niedergang.
So Council Ba is going to speak first on items 21 and 74, and then I'd like to speak on the other three after that.
Okay, I got Council Ba, Niedergang, Strezzo. Klingon would like to sign on to 21, 22, 23, and 25. And Council Ba, you have the floor, and Council White as well. The whole council, well, let's wait and see on that one. Council Ba.
Thank you, Mr. President. If you have wondered, you know, why I'm like Niedergang and I don't pick our phone calls every Sunday at 5:00 p.m., now you know. We are with our neighbors. Somerville Alliance for Safe Streets, discussing how to improve our streets. With your permission, I would like to sponsor Stephanie Galaxy to go into further details about Somerville Alliance for Safe Street and talk about their upcoming summit on February 28th. Ms. Galaxy lives on Morrison Ave, San Neville. She became more aware of traffic danger during Broadway Bridge closure. She has a 25-year-old and deal with a new baby in May. As a result of Leah's demands, that she started a neighborhood newsletter about changes on our streets and reviewing some of his published resources about streets. So I think she's in the audience. I will want to yield, you know, so you can unmute her so she can present.
All right, Council Ba wishes to sponsor Stephanie Galaxy. Seeing no objections, I'm going to unmute you, Stephanie. And you are muted on my side.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Great. Thank you so much for having me in for that introduction. So writing this neighborhood newsletter has provided an excellent opportunity to learn about the city documents related to our streets. Because I participated in Summer Vision 2040, I started by reviewing its mobility section, which I didn't write. It stresses safety and equitable accessibility. Then there's also Vision Zero and the Complete Streets Ordinance and the ADA Transition Plan and the Climate Forward Action Plan, all with implications for our streets. These documents are all pretty consistent. They prioritize safety and accessibility and emphasize supporting multimodal transit to reduce greenhouse gases. And yet, I've observed that many city projects aren't incorporating these goals. In joining the Somerville Alliance for Safe Streets, I found that other people had noticed this as well. A lot of us volunteered our time to draft these visions at the request of the city, and we want to see them implemented. With four pedestrian deaths in two years, this is urgent. The Somerville Alliance for Safe Streets is asking for Somerville to assure safety on our streets and sidewalks, for all residents to have equitable mobility and access, and that our public space be used for the public good. These are the same goals in Somerville's published documents, but we're together because we feel we need to hold Somerville accountable to them. I know that members of the city council also care about the fate of our streets, and I'd like to ask for your engagement with this. On February 28th, we're hosting a virtual summit from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. to present the city with our call to action, which already has over 250 signatures. I invite the council and everyone in Somerville to attend. For more information, send us an email at SomervilleSafeStreets@gmail.com or find us on Facebook, the Somerville Alliance for Safe Streets. Thank you.
Council Ba, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Stephanie, for that speech. It's really nice, you know, to have our own neighbors coming to present before the council on issues of street safety. So through you, Mr. President, this is also the petition, you know, I would encourage, you know, you to and everyone in the council to check it out and also consider signing if you haven't already and spread the word. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Niedergang?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to speak about items 22 and 25, which are about staffing and budgeting for the mobility department. And I want to share some information on those two items from the last two Traffic and Parking Committee meetings. As you may recall, in February 2020, just a year ago, the mayor presented to the council a supplementary budget request to create a new Department of Transportation and to hire a director and two additional staff for that new department. The mayor's proposal was to expand and rename and raise the stature of what is currently the Mobility Department division of the Office of Strategic Planning and Community Development. Soon after, the coronavirus hit in March of 2020, and all new hires were put on hold, so that request was not included in the fiscal year 2021 budget. Since Leah Zalman was killed by a motor vehicle on Election Day, November 3, 2020, I've been advocating that the mayor submit a similar supplemental request to strengthen the mobility division so that it can fix our streets more quickly to avoid additional injuries and deaths. The Somerville Alliance for Safe Streets has made this one of their top requests, and the resolution that Council Mbah and I submitted as item 22 for tonight's meeting is intended to amplify that request. At the last two Traffic and Parking Committee meetings, Brad Rossen, the Director of Mobility, has discussed a supplemental budget request with the committee. In January, Mr. Rossen told us that the mayor had asked him to prepare such a request. And at this past Monday night's meeting, Mr. Rossen told the committee that he submitted that funding request to the mayor, and he told us that it includes funding for staffing consultants and implementation and infrastructure. So it's my hope that the council will soon be receiving this supplemental budget request for funds to significantly increase the pace at which we are reconstructing our streets to make our streets safer. And I know some councillors, I think Councillors Ballantyne and Ewan Campan have expressed that money might be better spent for construction and infrastructure and engineering. And, you know, I'm not an expert. I'm not a professional. I'm not going to be putting this together, and possibly that would be the best use of additional funds. And, you know, I'll leave that for the mayor to present to us and for us to discuss with the mayor and his staff in terms of how that money is best used. My priority is to get that money in place now, so work can begin now for the summer construction season, so that we can make a lot of progress on improving our streets and prevent these horrible tragedies. So it's my hope that the council will support supplemental funds to save lives on our streets after, of course, reviewing and perhaps suggesting changes to whatever the mayor proposes. Councillor Scott, who may want to speak on this, I don't know, I just threw his item in here about the mobility department, it seemed related. So I would suggest that items 22 be sent to finance, and it's up to Councillor Scott, of course, because item 25 is his, but it would seem that that should also go to finance. And then I'd ask that items 21 and 23 and 74 go to traffic and parking. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, Council Scott would like to sign on and speak on the item.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, and I just want to start by thanking councillors, our colleagues at large, and in Ward 5 for their work on this. I had put forward item number 25 specifically to address many of these requests and so that we could have the conversation that my colleague from Ward 5 was just talking about, which is to weigh any proposals that come in from the administration and to make sure that the message of this Safe Streets Alliance is really heard and that our response as a city isn't just to throw money at more of what we've been doing that hasn't been working, but is a thoughtful and effective response. So I'm very excited to have this conversation in Finance Committee. I think it is it is an important opportunity for us to rethink the structure of how we respond to these issues on our streets to make sure that both our spending and our organizational alignment actually reflects that we take this problem seriously and don't intend simply to talk about it, but to address it effectively and quickly. So I've got a lot more thoughts on this. I've been working with people who are involved in this alliance and obviously support it. And I think it'll be a very, very robust conversation in the Finance Committee. So it'd be great to have 22 and 25 go there. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, Council Ewan Campan would like to sign on to 22 and 23. Any further discussion?
Yeah. Mr. President, thank you. I wanted to ask some questions about the resolution number 23. I suppose through you, if I may, ask the Councilor Niedergang and Mbah about this. About, thank you, about the fact that, first off, that, yes, four pedestrians have been killed in the past two years, but two of Have been killed in the past two years, but two of the four, I believe they were two of the four, possibly three of the four were. Were killed um along Mystic Ave, which is a state street. So and. Um, Mr. President, you're in Ward One, I'm in Ward One, and these are these are wards one and four. Um, this has been an ongoing problem and it has has been a state, these are state roads. So my question is. Um, to Counselors Muban, Nidergang, what are your what are your ideas about? Fixing state roads and making state state roads safer. This has been an issue for numerous years.
Uh who would like to lead?
Uh may I uh may I lead off on this, on Mr. President?
Council Needa Gang?
Thank you. Uh and thanks for that question, Counselor Strezzo. I think it's a good one, and I think actually that that area, in my opinion at least. Is the worst traffic, the worst, the most dangerous traffic area in the city. So it's a very appropriate question. Uh we've actually been discussing this in the Traffic and Parking Committee uh for over a year. And as you as you may recall, exactly a year ago, I think it was February twentieth. There was a meeting at the East Summerville Community School where um staff from the Mass DOT. Uh along with staff from our Mobility Department presented on changes. Uh that will be made in that area using federal and state funds. Uh and this is still, this item is still in the Traffic and Parking Committee because I think everybody agrees. That the changes that are proposed are not sufficient simply because the funding is not sufficient. Uh our Mobility Department, despite the fact that the city doesn't have jurisdiction, has been extremely involved in this. And I think, you know, advocating forcefully for the types of improvements that need to be made there. But you know, it's, what can I say? It's it's an uphill battle. I think it's it's a it's a. It's a legacy and an example of, you know, the the racial and class discrimination that exists in our society. With these types of uh problems on streets happening in the poorest neighborhoods. And uh yeah, it's, you know, but there is, the city is having an impact on these streets and uh will continue to do so. And I think the stronger our Mobility Department is, the more time they will have to be able to devote to the devote to this. Working with the state bodies, which are sometimes not easy to work with. State's state's operation is much slower than the city's is in terms of contracting. Uh everything is a challenge to move it forward. So with more staff, uh we could move these things along uh more quickly. But uh it is a good question, and I wish I had an open shut answer for you. Uh I think it's gonna take a while before these problems get fixed, uh unfortunately. And I'm afraid that there'll be, you know, more serious injuries and deaths down there.
Through, Mr. President, through you to uh Counselor Needa Gang, thank you for answering that. And as I recall, I think I am correcting myself. I think we had three deaths. On Mystic Avenue in one year. Uh in twenty nineteen, three deaths.
I believe you are correct on that. Uh Council of Bar, did you have a comment on that?
Yeah, just to uh thank you, uh Mr. President. No, Counselor Strezzo, everything, you know, your question is spot on. I just wanna like just add that, you know, uh. We will we will start from building what we can in the city and then why engage in our state delegation because we don't really walk in a vacuum. But like Counselor Nidigan said, sometimes it feels like we are actually walking a vacuum because. Even think about like Mystic Ave where, you know, I my street is perpendicular to Mystic Ave. And it's also as scary as hell. So and I spoke to this my state rep, I think she has secured some funding, you know, but. I'm still to realize like a crosswalk on Mystic Ave. It's also a very dangerous intersection. You see folks, when there's a game at Dillboy, you see the kids trying to cross Mystic Ave to come to the gas station at Dunkin Donut. It's very scary. So yes, it's uh the more we start building, you know, like internally and really creating those structures. I mean, I think at some point, Counselor Needa Gang, you know, will most likely invite some of our state. Delegation to traffic and parking or someone, you know, in this meeting to engage them because if not, it's a. Yes, it will be tricky to like get some of this needed work done in due time.
Uh, Mr. President, through you to Counselor Roba, thank you for elaborating. And I do want to clarify that I'm speaking of Mystic Ave uh in wards one and four. So on the east side of the city, that's the 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 region I'm speaking of on Mystic Ave. Yes, Dillboy, the the yes, the the uh the area crossing Dillboy, I hear frequently from constituents on how. That dangerous and how uncomfortable people are crossing, that the the time to cross the street is not enough time, that the uh. The the crosswalks are not long enough. And um those are those are common complaints, but I'm speaking of Mystic Ave in one and four.
Yep, and just to bring it home that one death is way too many. And like I've always said, ever since I got on this council, we don't want design by disaster. It's not only when, you know, like another death, of course, then that's when we start rushing to get things done. Like this is a way like. I mean, four, it's a human beings with families and friends and neighbors. So, yeah, no, thank you. Let's not be level at this point.
Yes, and so I I I'm I'm definitely hoping for more policy not and and state response. Thank you very much. Uh for the counselors, for the conversation and Mr. President.
All right, any further discussion? Here and none. Uh items number twenty two and twenty five will be laid on the table for approval and referred to the Finance Committee. Uh Council Needa Gang, did you want the other ones to go to committee or can we just approve those?
I would like those to go to traffic and parking, the other three.
Items twenty one, twenty three, and seventy four will be laid on the table for approval and referred to traffic and parking. All right, next item will be ready, Mr. Clark.
The next item is item number seventy one. Just a communication from the city solicitor requesting approval to retain outside counsel to advise this council. And its confirmation of appointments and personnel matters committee as to its recommendations with respect to patrol officer candidates.
Okay, so I have now received guidance for myself on this personally, but on an abundance of caution, I am going to recuse myself on this item. And our Counselor Rosetti will take the floor as Chair and President. Counselor Rosetti. You're muted.
Okay. Here I am. Thank you. Um thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Solicitor, could you please confirm that this is in fact an item for executive session?
Uh through you, uh Vice Chair, uh it is appropriate to go into executive session, um although I would. To the extent, uh the council would like to have a brief description of the order, I'd be happy to do. Uh outside of executive session, uh and then anything beyond, I think my initial uh description would require an executive session. Um through you, I would state that the intent of this order is to maintain consistency with similar matters. Which in which the city is represented um by outside counsel K P law. Um which regards to uh the confirmation process throughout uh. Matters that have involved this council and are ongoing, and this order is intended to maintain the continuity. As to this subject matter of confirmation. Beyond that, I would say, um Adam, uh Vice Chair, that uh I'm sorry, Vice President, that this matter. Um should be discussed in executive session.
Thank you, sir. To my colleagues, um I've had conversation with the solicitor on this matter, and I had requested this. Um in this way, is there any question or discussion? Mr. Clark, could you call the role on uh?
Sorry, Madam, I I do have a question.
Counselor Needa Gang?
All right, I was typing in the chat, but I couldn't get in quickly enough. Um I would just like more of an ex. Uh I'm I'm a little bit in the dark about this, and before we go into, before I vote on whether we go to executive session. Uh I would like a bit more of an explanation as to as to why this can't be discussed in public. I'm not challenging it, I just don't understand. And before I vote on going to session, I want to understand. Why this discussion needs to be conducted in executive session. So I'm not against it, I just want to understand why.
Through you, um, Vice President. Um, I anticipate that this discussion will touch on matters that are pending, adversarial matters that are pending. Because um the recommendation that we have is to retain KP Law. Um attorney uh Zesson, who is presently representing the city. Uh in this council uh in those pending matters uh and um. And because of the nature of the issue being uh consistent with those pending matters. I believe the best uh course is to go into executive session because it would more than likely. Uh involve discussing those uh issues and pending matters.
Madam Chair, can I ask a clarifying question, please?
Yes, sir.
So through you to Solicitor Wright, so you're saying that. We have to go into executive session because what we are going to discuss in reference to this item. Will of necessity touch on uh other items that are currently uh being, you know. Being addressed uh in not in public? Is that, do I understand that correctly?
Through you, uh um Vice President, yes, uh Counselor Needa Gang, this uh will involve. A discussion of uh issues that are analogous to matters that are pending uh before uh. State agency, a state agency, um and very similar issue. Uh and uh rather than risk having that discussion in public session. Uh my expectation is that if we can get through touching on. The analogous issues that we obviously come back into a public session. And make a vote on this uh order and have any discussion that could take place uh in public. Uh and if I may, um Madam Vice President. Uh also on the other matters, I believe is present this evening and it was intended to have him join the executive session. Um perhaps the city clerk can confirm that.
Okay, I understand. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Uh, Counselor Needa Gang, just so you know, Counselor Needa Gang, um I've had more phone calls than I care to admit. And um it was I that wanted this public, uh this executive session, and I hope you would respect me as Chair of the committee when we go in session. Um, Counselors?
Thank you for your work. I just want to understand. Thank you.
Okay, no, I appreciate that. Thank you. Counselor Strezzo, to answer your question, we are. This this motion, if if accepted, we would immediately move into executive session. Thank you. You're welcome. Counselor White, you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Actually, a question or comment. Um, you know, I appreciate the fact that, you know, you've requested to go on executive session. But I honestly, at this point, can't see the basis under the requirements of the open meeting law from what we know. Um yes, there are cases that are pending. Um my view would be that the only reason to go on executive session would be. Strategy or the merits, for instance, were discussed, but the reason why counsel was hired for that. Um for the for the current matters has already been discussed. So. Um my fear is that we're gonna go on executive session, discuss something that really doesn't require executive session. You know, narrowly, in a situation like this, wouldn't you hold it in the open, and this is to the city solicitor? And then if something was brought that really wanted going on executive session at that point. Um you would basically interrupt and say that, given the the trend of the question, I believe at that point, executive session would be appropriate. For the chair.
Mr. Solicitor.
Through you, Madam Vice President, um to Counselor White. I do not necessarily believe we have to go into executive session. If this council is prepared to vote, we you know, we're. Asking for immediate consideration on this because of the uh desire to move the appointment process along. Uh which and uh to issue the committee report on the confirmation process. Um so if uh the city council wishes to move the item and hopefully. Uh unanimous vote, we could get uh approval to retain outside counsel. Uh there would be no need to go into executive session. If we do go into executive session, I would agree that. Uh you know, there may be questions of strategy that come up, but I think that they're likely to touch on. The other matters that I mentioned that are pending uh as being analogous to to uh the situation, but. Um I I I understand your point. Um and um. The only reason again, I think we need to go into executive session is if we're going to face more questions from the city council as to this matter. And again, I would draw analogies to the uh the two pending matters.
Yeah, I mean, I I respectfully disagree at this point. I don't know if the if the. Um president would feel comfortable just stating what the questions would be, and then there might be a fear that rest of the conference executive session. Again, this is only my view.
Uh you know, I'm gonna interject here as Chair of the committee. Mr. Clark, would you read item thirty?
Certainly, Madam President. Item number thirty is a report of the Committee on Confirmation Appointments and Personnel Matters, which met on February second.
So I chair that committee. My work is not complete. Our work is not complete. I move to lay this item on the table. On the motion to lay on the table, any discussion?
Madam President, which item?
Item thirty, the Report of Confirmation of Appointments Meeting of February second. My our work is not complete. I have moved to lay the report on the table. Mr. Clark, would you call the role on laying this item on the table?
Question on the on the matter, uh Madam Chair, before we vote.
Counselor Needa Gang?
Can you explain your intent in laying the item on the on the table? Is this to defer it uh beyond tonight's meeting? Uh I I I don't understand what you're doing, what your intent is in laying it on the table.
I I would like to, I I would like to take it up at the next meeting. I'm anticipating to be ready by our next council meeting. I again. Wish you all would honor my request to go into executive session.
Well, at this point, Madam President, I Vice President, I am I am prepared to honor that request. I have a lot of questions I want to ask about this matter, and I anticipate that answers to those questions will bring up matters. That should not be revealed in public because it will harm this other case that the city has. So so I do want to go into executive session. Uh I understand that that uh Counselor White, who is a lot smarter about the law than I am, does not want to. But perhaps rather than deferring this, if you don't want to, you should have a vote and see if the council, if the council wants to go into executive session. Or see how other counselors feel about it, because I've asked some questions. Counselor White has expressed his doubts about going to executive session. That's all that we've heard from so far. Um so I mean, I'm I'm fine with putting this off if that's what you think is the best course of action, but I I know. I know that there's some urgency behind these hires and uh. You know, it doesn't seem that it should be delayed unless there's, you know, unless there's a really good reason to. So I I think I would guess, I would just encourage you, first of all, I want to, I'm grateful for all the work that you've done on this. And I I didn't mean to be holding holding things up, but I would encourage you to just, you know. Keep on pushing on this if that's the direction that you think this should go into executive session. Let's hear from from other colleagues. Maybe they agree with Counselor White, maybe they agree with you and me, I don't know.
Thank you, Counselor Needa Gang. Counselor White, I I see that the solicitor wishes to speak. Will you yield to the solicitor, Counselor?
Oh, certainly, certainly.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Solicitor.
Thank you, Madam Vice President and and Counselor White. Um. There is no harm in expanding the reason for going into executive session to cover that area which uh Counselor White indicated. So to the extent, Counselors may intend to ask questions that relate to. So to the extent counselors may intend to uh ask questions that relate to strategy, litigation strategy, we certainly can add that as a reason for going in um as well as the potential for discussing pending matters uh related to the same subject matter.
Madam President?
Yes, sir, Counselor White.
I don't want to gum anything up, so I will rely on the city solicitor's opinion. However, if we do go on to executive session, and I believe that executive session is not warranted, then I'll raise an objection at that point in time. So um at this point, then I was drawing, or I'm I'm not going to vote no, but I just want that to be on the record because I'm always concerned many, many years ago, the Ben Goodval and actually getting um nabbed to butt it by for going into executive session for an invalid reason, so it's always put a little cross in, you know, in the back of my mind. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Counselor Strezzo, did you have questions?
No, I don't have a question. I I'm ready to vote and uh I I'm I'm ready to vote.
Thank you. Counselor Ewan Campan?
Thank you very much, Madam President. I'll be very brief just to to and please, uh Mr. Solicitor, stop me if this should not be asked in open session. Just for the sake of transparency, my understanding from just having read the committee report is that the the committee is recommending against, is recommending to not approve one of the hires and that, you know, civil service is an extremely complex legal process and uh the the discussion of how that is handled may touch on things that involve uh executive session. Is that correct?
Through you, Madam Vice President, uh yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you very much. And Madam Chair, this is a perfectly, I certainly support going to executive session. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Clerk, um now um processing what just occurred, and there was a motion on the on the floor to move into executive session. We were in discussion on that motion, and then I believe I mistakenly moved another motion to uh table my report. How should we handle that?
Madam President, the item before the the body was the uh item number seventy-one. The action that you recommended of laying out of number thirty on the table is not a final action, so if you want that to stand, that's fine. If you would like to withdraw that motion and stick to item seventy-one, then we can go that way.
I will withdraw it at this time and um instead stick with seventy-one that's on the uh that is on the table right now. If there's no further discussion from my colleagues, let me just double check that. Uh I believe we're all clear there. Mr. Clerk, could you call the roll on on the motion to go into executive session?
On moving to executive session, Counselor Niedigang?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne?
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campan?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo?
Yes.
Counselor Klingon?
Yes.
Counselor Mbah?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti?
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin? I don't record a vote for Counselor McLaughlin. Madam President, ten counselors have voted in favor of moving to executive session. One is abs- one is recused. Uh that motion has been approved.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So this committee will uh will recess our city council meeting while we move into executive session. We will reconvene at the closure of the executive session. Colleagues, um do not uh sign out the webinar. Just leave the webinar when you move to go into that executive session link. We are in recess.
Well, how are you being hurt in executive session if you can't get into it?
This is the regular city council meeting.
Oh, yeah, right. That's where we're talking. Who's this? Bushbrook?
Yeah.
Okay, that's all right. We're just trying to figure something out here. Now, if you go in with another email and follow the executive session link, that'll put you into the executive session, but you won't be an organizer and you won't be able to...
No, I won't. And I'm the only organizer for this meeting.
All right. I don't know what to tell you.
Um, can you communicate with the, anybody in executive session?
Yeah.
Let them know that I'm rebooting and it'll be like five more minutes.
Okay.
Thanks.
Mr. Clerk, I believe we're ready to roll.
Okay, one minute, Madam Chair, Madam President. Are you ready to call the meeting back to order now?
Yes, sir.
All right, following the executive session, this is a roll call to determine the presence of a quorum. Counselor Niedergang.
Here.
Counselor White.
Yeah.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Here.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Here.
Counselor Davis.
Here.
Counselor Strezzo.
Here.
Counselor Klingon.
Present.
Counselor Mba.
Present.
Counselor Scott.
Present.
Counselor Rosetti.
Present.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yeah.
Madam President, all eleven counselors are present. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Counselor McLaughlin is recused from the item, so I now will... If you're not talking, please mute your mic. There's an echo. I would like to report that the committee did... The only motions taken this evening in executive session was that to adjourn. There were no other motions taken in executive session. Now, back in public session, if I may, I would colleagues like to move to approve to retain outside counsel to advise this council and its confirmation of appointments and personnel matters committee as to its recommendations with respect to patrol officer candidates. Any discussion on that motion? On the item, Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank you for the incredible amount of work that you've been putting in on this, and confirmation of appointments ain't easy. I will say that I am glad that we have this before us, and I'm also infuriated that it takes an hour in executive session to do this. I am just insulted that, in fact, in the order before us, it cites Section 2-121 of the Code of Ordinances that allows for us to retain our own outside counsel when the city council deems it appropriate. But apparently, that statutory authority that we have as a legislative body to retain outside counsel is disregarded and not valid unless the mayor or the law department thinks that they want it to happen for some reason, as opposed to on the multiple other occasions when the city council has attempted to exercise it. So it is extremely frustrating, and I just wanted to make it plain that this is, I think, a procedure that should be more commonplace and streamlined, and echo once again that the city council should have our own counsel, as has been demonstrated on multiple occasions. Thank you, Madam President.
Mute, Madam President. Mr. Clerk, with no further discussion, I ask that you please call the roll of the motion.
Madam President, there's a roll call vote on the approval of Item Number 71, a request to approve outside, to retain outside counsel as described. On that item, Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Present.
Counselor Mba.
Present.
Counselor Scott.
Present.
Counselor Rosetti.
Present.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yeah.
Madam President, all eleven counselors are present. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Counselor McLaughlin is recused from the item, so I now will... If you're not talking, please mute your mic. There's an echo. I would like to report that the committee did... The only motions taken this evening in executive session was that to adjourn. There were no other motions taken in executive session. Now, back in public session, if I may, I would colleagues like to move to approve to retain outside counsel to advise this council and its confirmation of appointments and personnel matters committee as to its recommendations with respect to patrol officer candidates. Any discussion on that motion? On the item, Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank you for the incredible amount of work that you've been putting in on this, and confirmation of appointments ain't easy. I will say that I am glad that we have this before us, and I'm also infuriated that it takes an hour in executive session to do this. I am just insulted that, in fact, in the order before us, it cites Section 2-121 of the Code of Ordinances that allows for us to retain our own outside counsel when the city council deems it appropriate. But apparently, that statutory authority that we have as a legislative body to retain outside counsel is disregarded and not valid unless the mayor or the law department thinks that they want it to happen for some reason, as opposed to on the multiple other occasions when the city council has attempted to exercise it. So it is extremely frustrating, and I just wanted to make it plain that this is, I think, a procedure that should be more commonplace and streamlined, and echo once again that the city council should have our own counsel, as has been demonstrated on multiple occasions. Thank you, Madam President.
Mute, Madam President. Mr. Clerk, with no further discussion, I ask that you please call the roll of the motion.
Madam President, there's a roll call vote on the approval of Item Number 71, a request to approve outside, to retain outside counsel as described. On that item, Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Present.
Counselor Mba.
Present.
Counselor Scott.
Present.
Counselor Rosetti.
Present.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yeah.
Madam President, all eleven counselors are present. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Counselor McLaughlin is recused from the item, so I now will... If you're not talking, please mute your mic. There's an echo. I would like to report that the committee did... The only motions taken this evening in executive session was that to adjourn. There were no other motions taken in executive session. Now, back in public session, if I may, I would colleagues like to move to approve to retain outside counsel to advise this council and its confirmation of appointments and personnel matters committee as to its recommendations with respect to patrol officer candidates. Any discussion on that motion? On the item, Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank you for the incredible amount of work that you've been putting in on this, and confirmation of appointments ain't easy. I will say that I am glad that we have this before us, and I'm also infuriated that it takes an hour in executive session to do this. I am just insulted that, in fact, in the order before us, it cites Section 2-121 of the Code of Ordinances that allows for us to retain our own outside counsel when the city council deems it appropriate. But apparently, that statutory authority that we have as a legislative body to retain outside counsel is disregarded and not valid unless the mayor or the law department thinks that they want it to happen for some reason, as opposed to on the multiple other occasions when the city council has attempted to exercise it. So it is extremely frustrating, and I just wanted to make it plain that this is, I think, a procedure that should be more commonplace and streamlined, and echo once again that the city council should have our own counsel, as has been demonstrated on multiple occasions. Thank you, Madam President.
Mute, Madam President. Mr. Clerk, with no further discussion, I ask that you please call the roll of the motion.
Madam President, there's a roll call vote on the approval of Item Number 71, a request to approve outside, to retain outside counsel as described. On that item, Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mba.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Recused.
Madam President, ten counselors have voted in favor of that item. One is recused. That item has been approved.
Mr. Clerk, I believe we're ready to roll.
Okay, one minute, Madam Chair, Madam President. Are you ready to call the meeting back to order now?
Yes, sir.
All right, following the executive session, this is a roll call to determine the presence of a quorum. Counselor Niedergang.
Here.
Counselor White.
Yeah.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Here.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Here.
Counselor Davis. Counselor Strezzo.
Here.
Counselor Klingon.
Present.
Counselor Mbah.
Present.
Counselor Scott.
Present.
Counselor Rosetti.
Present.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yeah.
Madam President, all eleven counselors are present. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Counselor McLaughlin is, President McLaughlin is recused from the item, so I now will, if you're not talking, please mute your mic. There's an echo. I would like to report that the committee did, the only motions taken this evening in executive session were, was that to adjourn. There were no other motions taken in executive session. Now, back in public session, if I may, I would, colleagues, like to move to approve to retain outside counsel to advise this council and its confirmation of appointments and personnel matters committee as to its recommendations with respect to patrol officer candidates. Any discussion on that motion? On the item, Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank you for the incredible amount of work that you've been putting in on this and, confirmation of appointments ain't easy. I will say that I am glad that we have this before us and I'm also infuriated that it takes an hour in executive session to do this. I am just insulted that, in fact, in the order before us, it cites Section 2-121 of the Code of Ordinances that allows for us to retain our own outside counsel when the city council deems it appropriate, but apparently that statutory authority that we have as a legislative body to retain outside counsel is disregarded and not valid unless the mayor or the law department thinks that they want it to happen for some reason, as opposed to on the multiple other occasions when the city council has attempted to exercise it. So it is extremely frustrating and I just wanted to make it plain that this is, I think, a procedure that should be more commonplace and streamlined and echo once again that this city council should have our own counsel as has been demonstrated on multiple occasions. Thank you, Madam President. Mute, Madam President.
I'm muted, I'm muted. Mr. Clerk, with no further discussion, I ask that you please call the roll of the motion.
Madam President, there's a roll call vote on the approval of item number 71, a request to approve outside, to retain outside counsel as described. On that item, Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Recused.
Madam President, ten counselors have voted in favor of that item. One is recused. That item has been approved.
I now move for reconsideration of the item in the hopes that reconsideration fails on the motion to reconsider. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, could you call the roll on reconsideration?
This is a roll call vote on bringing item 71 back before this body for purposes of reconsideration. Counselor Niedergang.
So remind me on this, I believe.
Yeah, you want, I guess. A yes vote means you are in agreement to reconsider and then we will have the next vote of whether you wish to change your vote.
Okay, I vote yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis. Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah. Counselor Mbah. I don't record a vote for Counselor Mbah. Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin. I don't record a vote for Counselor McLaughlin. Madam President, on the motion, nine counselors have voted in favor. Two are absent. That motion to reconsider has been approved.
Mr. John.
Mr. Clerk, may the record reflect that Counselor Mbah has voted in the affirmative.
Certainly. So ten counselors have voted in favor of that item. One is recused. That item has been approved and item 71 is now before this body again.
If any member wishes to change their vote, this would be the time. So, Mr. Clerk, the same motion is now before you. A vote of yes is to retain the outside counsel. Correct, Mr. Clerk?
That is exactly correct. It's very simple. The motion is back before us again.
Any questions? Okay, Mr. Clerk, thank you for your patience. If you could, one more time, sir.
With feeling. On the motion, Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor White. Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin. I don't record a vote for Counselor McLaughlin. Ten counselors have voted in favor of that item. One is recused. That item has been approved.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I believe we go back to the regular order of business and I invite Mr. President back to be our fearless leader.
Madam President, there was one more, or, Mr. President, there is one more item that I believe was to be taken out of order and that was item 75. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Clerk.
Item 75 is requested, the mayor questioned the appropriation of $55,000 from unreserved fund balance to the SBCD's economic development professional and technical services account to conduct a district improvement financing analysis for Boynton Yards, Clarendon Hill, and Union Square redevelopment projects.
All right, I do believe we have Mr. Gallagani in the house to address any questions. On the item, Counselor Scott, do you have any comment?
I'll hold.
Okay. Any discussion on the item before I hand it over to Mr. Gallagani? No further discussion and no objection. Mr. Gallagani, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a request for actually three separate projects, too, that we look to initiate soon, and that is to hire a consultant to conduct a DIF plan and a DIF analysis for two different areas, the Boynton Yards District and the Clarendon Hill District. Of course, the Boynton Yards area is an area that we have targeted for significant growth and redevelopment. And as part of that district, in order to make that district flourish, it's assumed that we will, we, meaning the private sector and the city, invest a substantial amount of funds in building out the infrastructure to allow that development to happen. And one tool that we think might be useful is district improvement financing. And so a portion of this, of this funding would be used to hire a consultant to put together a feasibility plan for a DIF, a district improvement financing plan, and to do all the analysis that's necessary to put together a plan and present it to the council at some future date. Similarly, the Clarendon Hill project, which has been discussed numerous times on the council, it's a redevelopment project of the Clarendon Hill housing development. And the strategy there is to use a tool called the Urban Housing DIF, District Improvement Financing, a special housing-oriented DIF, to be able to ascertain whether there is potential future revenue that we could utilize, the city could utilize, to help meet our commitments of roughly $10 million plus towards that redevelopment project. And so, again, presumably the same consultant would do a DIF plan for that project as well. And in addition, we're hoping to hire the same consultant to do an analysis of where are we so far with Union Square and the DIF that was approved by the council a few years ago. And so we're asking, we're going to ask the consultant to do a quick report, summarize the growth that's taking place, and take a look at the original DIF plan and see if we are making progress, adequate progress, as we expected when we put together the plan a couple of years ago. So we hope to hire one consultant and we're utilizing this, these funds to hire that consultant to do all three of those projects. I'd have to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, do we have any questions from the council?
Yeah, Mr. President, I'll yield to Counsel White, sorry.
Counselor White.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for the yield. I guess the question I have is if it's the intention of this item to go to committee, because I have a number of questions that I'd like to ask, but I don't want to, you know, take the time up this evening given the length of the agendas. So I guess my question would be to the president or to the chair of finance, whether it's the intention to have this go to committee.
Well, I do believe that the city was hoping to get a vote tonight, but I do think if there were a lot of questions to be asked, it'd be much better dealt in committee. So if you had a lot of questions, that's what I would suggest. Do you have a comment, Chair Scott?
Yes, Mr. President, I was asked today to have this brought for immediate consideration. I, I personally have my own reservations about allocating $55,000 for this and about the use of the DIF as well as our progress in Union Square. So I, I would be with Counselor White inclined to send this to committee, Mr. President.
That sounds fine to me. Well, does anyone else have any questions that they'd like to address before we send this to committee?
Mr. President?
Counsel Ballantyne.
Thank you. Through you to Mr. Gallagani. You know, I, I heard about the idea of floating or using a DIF tool, I don't know, maybe six weeks ago. Could you explain, well, that's probably too many questions, but just very shortly, how this could be used for the housing development in Clarendon?
Certainly, through the president. As I understand it, there, the city has committed approximately $10 million, actually a little bit more than $10 million to help make that Clarendon Hill redevelopment project happen. And that commitment was made and we have already identified $4 million to meet that portion of that commitment from the Community Preservation Act funding. And we're looking at strategies to come up with the rest of the money and it's, you know, roughly, we anticipate seven to eight million dollars. It's a, it's basically $10 million towards the project itself and then some additional funds to subsidize some of the internal infrastructure that would be built out as part of that project. It looks like the, the infrastructure costs are a little higher than it was anticipated a year ago. And so, again, one strategy we think is a viable one is to use DIF and that's using the future anticipated property tax generation from that project to support borrowing to meet that missing seven to eight billion dollar gap. And, you know, the premise is that this has been a publicly owned site for greater than 60 years and so we've received absolutely no tax revenue from this project. However, when it is redeveloped, a portion of the site will be privately owned and so it will generate tax revenue. But the thought is that we, we've never received tax revenue before and if we do receive, as we will receive some in the future, it seems like that's a reasonable strategy to help utilize, capture that property tax revenue and fill the gap since we've never received it before. So we're not counting on it in the future necessarily. Is that, I hope that answers at least a big portion of your question?
Yeah, that does at a high level. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, any further discussion? Here, no further discussion. This item will refer to the finance committee. Thank you for coming, Tom.
Thank you.
And before we move forward, I don't know how things went in executive session. Does anyone need a break? You can write it in the box if you want. We can take a five-minute recess or we can proceed. If there are no comments, let's just keep going.
Mr. President, we move to item number seven on the agenda, which is in order, suited by Counselor Ballantyne, the director of SBCD with the planning board, plan periodic reviews of the zoning ordinances to determine if they're working as intended.
Counsel Ballantyne.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Bartman and Mr. Proakis and I were speaking about a few different things, but we talked about sort of general conversations of like, how is the new zoning working? So in consultation with them, I've submitted this order that they and the planning board come up with a plan for periodic reviews on the zoning ordinance and they will determine what the schedule is. It could be some check-in once a year, but I just wanted colleagues to understand the, the background on that.
All right, any discussion?
And, and, Mr. President, if that could please go to, obviously, land use and the planning board, with a copy to the planning board.
Very good. I hear no further discussion. This item is laid on the table for approval and referred to the plan, the land use committee with a copy sent to the planning board.
Item number eight is in order submitted by Counselor Ballantyne that the director of SBCD discuss whether the zoning ordinances, whether the zoning ordinance's pre-permitting process is working as intended.
Counsel Ballantyne.
Similar, this was in discussion with Mr. Bartman and the order is self-explanatory and I would ask that it be referred to land use. Thank you.
All right, seeing no further discussion, this item is laid on the table for approval and referred to land use.
Item number nine is in order, submitted by Counselor Ballantyne, the director of sustainability and environment, provide this council with updates to the climate forward plan.
Counsel Ballantyne.
Thank you. I would just ask that this be referred to open space. Thank you.
All right, here, no discussion. This item is laid on the table for approval and referred to open space.
Item number 10 is in order submitted by Counselor Ballantyne that the director of mobility and the director of infrastructure and asset management collaborate to write responses to several questions contained within regarding the Spring Hill separation project.
Counsel Ballantyne.
Thank you. I would ask that this be referred to traffic and parking, but the, as my colleagues know, I sit both on the, the committee for the Somerville Bike Committee and advisory committee and also the pedestrian transit advocacy committee. And there's been lots of dialogues as we've gotten lots of emails regarding the, the Spring Hill plan. And I think that, I think it's quite obvious that the bike community in particular is not satisfied with the the plan by the administration to put off the discussion of the bike or the dedicated bike paths until after they have a community process at some point in the future to be determined. The whole impetus or the whole move on the Spring Hill infrastructure plan is it's infrastructure, it's underground, and as I've mentioned before, there's sometimes a disconnect with all our plans that we have in the Vision Zero and are we actually moving the idea of Vision Zero forward? So I, with some community advocates, put a list of questions together that we would like to have answers on and really try to ascertain in more detail the, the thinking and the thought behind delaying any decisions for a protected bike lane. So it asks that this be referred to traffic and parking and I would also request, Mr. President, if you could take my late item out of order.
Okay, real quick on this item, Counselor Ewan Campen, have a comment?
Oh, excuse me.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Through you, thank you to Counselor Ballantyne. So I, I'm, I'm very grateful for, for the partnership on this. I know that Counselor Ballantyne serves on the bike committee and, you know, while this meeting has been ongoing, the city council received an updated letter from the bike committee outlining their kind of an overarching proposal for Highland Ave. And I actually have an item that we'll get to in a few moments based on kind of a very similar set of questions that I've been asking the administration. And, and I think it's important that although this first phase, it is in Ward Three and I'm, you know, I'm mindful of that, but I'm, I'm very, I'm, I'm hoping that the, the council will, the entire council will view this as a citywide priority and will be involved in these discussions because very relevant to the safe streets discussion that we were having earlier, this is the type of decision, I think, where the rubber really meets the road.
Thank you. Mr. President, if I could just add is on this particular item and the infrastructure problems, projects that we have, I understand that we need them. But this is the time now, or this is the only time actually, that the pedestrian transit advocacy group and the bike group can try to think into the future and be really forward-thinking. And we're always hampered with how things work with the infrastructure projects. And I really think it's very important that we unpack those a little bit and we have very distinct conversations on both ends and really try to drive the future planning. So if, if we leave everything the same, then it's going to be the same as it was since, what, about the 1950s? So that's 70 years of the same thing. Are we then trying to do 70 years of the same thing going forward? We should actually be more aspiring and really push the envelope here. So I just, thank you, Counselor Klingon, and just hope that we can really challenge the thinking, think about climate change, think about the, the mobility and, you know, the safety and the needs for all residents in Somerville. Thank you.
All right, have you said you had a late item you wanted to take out of order?
Yes, if the clerk could please read it. It was sent in around 5 o'clock or 6 o'clock.
All right, any discussion on taking the item out of order? Oh, did I hear something? Here, none. Please read the late item, Mr. Clerk.
The late item is a resolution submitted by Counselor Ballantyne that the administration, along with the director of health and human services, share a reopening plan for schools and businesses that defines goals, risks, and contingencies.
Counsel Ballantyne.
Sure, I, just one moment. Thank you. So the rest of this in the, the order will say that Somerville has stricter guidelines than the surrounding communities and the science used to make the decision. than the surrounding communities, and the science used to make the decisions for stricter guidelines should be shared with the community. Leading epidemiologists and also those living in Somerville inform us that the goals set in March 2020 are not the goals for February 2021 because the science data for COVID has evolved. The science world knows more now, and COVID is likely to be with us for a long time. Somerville needs to develop a plan to live with COVID, maximizing our schools and businesses' opportunities. We have to be adaptive with the emerging science. And I would ask that this please be referred to public health, public safety, and be scheduled sooner than later, and I could, with the indulgence of the Chair, invite in one of the leading epidemiologists, also a Somerville resident, to participate in this conversation. Thank you.
All right, I have Councilor Davis, Strezzo, Ba, Rosetti would like to sign on. Any discussion? Here are no further discussion. This item is laid on the table for approval and referred to public health and safety.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Next item.
Item number 11 is an order submitted by Councilors Strezzo and McLaughlin that this council's Committee on Housing and Community Development, with the Director of Economic Development, invite representatives of the Chamber of Commerce and Restaurant and Business Communities to discuss an ordinance addressing the impacts of third-party delivery services.
Council Strezzo.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. So the goal is to have this sent to Housing and Community Development and move this for a good discussion and then to hopefully get an ordinance in place. And if I could, please read, if we can read 12 and 13 and send them right to Housing and Community Development, please.
Councilor Davis and Ballantyne, I would like to sign on, and if you could read the other two items, Ms. Clerk.
Item number 12 is an order submitted by Council Strezzo that this council's Committee on Housing and Community Development discuss with the Director of Economic Development and the Chair of the Licensing Commission, the creation of a public education campaign focusing on copycat restaurants and their impact on the community. And item 13 is an order submitted by Council Strezzo that the city solicitor advise in writing and appear before this council's Committee on Housing and Community Development to determine how extensively the Encore Casino has been in compliance with its surrounding community agreement.
Sorry, Mr. Clerk, sorry, Mr. President, I inverted them in my head. Um, okay, can I break it down? Because yes.
Yes, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. So I, I was hoping to make this quick because it's in respect to my colleagues and a long night. So Order 12, I am hoping that this is a continuation on the conversation of, of assisting local residents, I'm sorry, restaurants in those copycat websites as a continuation on from our last meeting and conversation on that, how there are third parties that create copycat restaurant websites and those that are, those of us in the community that are looking to order from a restaurant think they are calling the individual restaurants, but they're actually calling a third-party restaurant site that has no sometimes affiliation whatsoever with the restaurant. And then with that, and with that, it takes a cut of the, of the restaurant's money, and this is, this is also a problem because these copycat websites, restaurant, copycat website restaurant, restaurant websites sometimes pretty much copy and paste menus from restaurant sites without the restaurant's permission or actually even knowing that they've done this. So then somebody calls, somebody looks up the, the Google number of this restaurant, calls the number, places the order, the third party picks up the order, but sometimes the menus from the restaurants are obsolete. So if we have people with allergies, and sometimes from what I've heard from restaurants is that restaurant owners is that the, these, then these third-party delivery services will say, well, just, just put something together and, and, and put it in the order. That's what I've heard. So if somebody has an allergy and doesn't know that they're ordering something and getting something else, that could be a very, very, very dangerous situation, and this has to be done. So this, this order is addressing that in hope, in the hope that, that it will create an education campaign for the restaurants because some restaurants aren't thinking about it, or they, some don't care, and some just feel it's a necessary evil. So this is an education campaign that we can talk about and hopefully implement so that restaurant owners really know their rights and abilities and, and, and how dire the situation can be sometimes. So all I have to say on that, can you please refer 12, 13, and 11 to Housing and Community Development? And?
Any discussion? Here are no further discussion. The three items are referred to, laid on the table for approval, referred to Housing Community Development.
Thank you.
Item 14 is communications submitted by Council Strezzo reporting on the Children's Cabinet.
Council Strezzo.
Mr. President, may I hold on to this on the agenda for next, next meeting? Next session?
Yes. This item will be laid on the table, no vote taken.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Thank you. That brings us to item number 16, which is communications submitted by Councilor Mbah, updating this council on the racial and social justice director hiring process.
Councilor Ba.
Thank you, Honorable President, just to say that we have, we're getting close to completing this process, I think. So we have two finalists that made it to, that made it, two candidates that are on the, on, on the schedule for the final interview, and I think the committee will be meeting this Saturday to formalize the question. I will not be there, but, but we have representative that's on this, this interview committee. We have members from the school committee, Andrea Green, members from Judge Somerville, Tracy Pratt, member from the public housing, we have members from the Somerville High School, and then we have Director Weber and Nancy Solomon from the mayors, from the administration. So I think that is it, and then we have Director Collins as somebody who is facilitating the process. So the long and short is, we have two finalists for the racial and social justice director, and hopefully, you know, we will be able to present a full report, you know, whoever makes it, I think either one will be great, but we'll, once we have the finalists, we'll be able to update the full council and with everybody that participated in the process. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, any discussion on the communication? Here are no further discussion. This item is laid on the table and placed on file.
Item number 17 is an order submitted by Councilor Ewan Campen that the Director of SBCD propose an alternate design for Phase One of the Highland Avenue portion of the Spring Hill Streetscapes Plan that includes protected bike lanes from the Central Hill Campus to Central Street without sacrificing the proposed pedestrian safety and MBTA bus improvements.
Councilor Ewan Campen.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the, the first phase of design and construction for the Spring Hill Streetscapes Project, which will be before this council, as per a funding request in the coming months, it includes a stretch of Highland Ave from Central Street East, basically to the McGrath Highway. And I want to be clear, the project is, goes well beyond Highland Ave, and I've heard an enormous amount of support for the project with the exception of Highland Ave because of the outstanding issue of bike lanes that we've heard about tonight. And so because this section is entirely within Ward Three, I've been focusing on this extensively over the last several weeks. I've had a number of meetings with the, with the design team, with advocates, Councilor Niedergang has been involved in some of those meetings as well, and I have become increasingly convinced that it is indeed possible, not only possible, but really, really essential that we do include protected bike lanes on Highland Ave, and I think that we can do it without sacrificing the pedestrian safety, the ADA compliance, and the MBTA bus improvements that, of course, we also need so desperately on this. So I, I want to be clear that the reason that I had not previously taken a kind of strong position on this is because of, there's a major outstanding question for me, which is whether installing this bike lane would create a really insurmountable issue for teachers at the high school, many of whom will continue to, to need to park in the surrounding neighborhood once the campus reconstruction is done because, of course, there is a great deal of parking being removed as part of that reconstruction. So this is, it's a technical question, it's an empirical question, and I know the administration is actively working on and researching right now. My own look at this, over the past several weeks, has convinced me that, that it is possible and that this is not the make or break component of that question. I, I think this is an issue that we are, there are a number of ways to address that we will have the opportunity over the coming months and years to address, but the question of whether we make a major infrastructure investment like this, this is our chance to do that. This is a chance that we're not going to get again for, for, for generations, long after we are wondering about whether there is, you know, sufficient parking this year. This is something I actually, I, I've been convinced that the choice is quite clear. I'm not saying that it's an easy choice, but I, I believe it is quite clear. And I also just briefly want to address some questions that I've gotten a lot from the public. So two, two issues. One, why do we need a bike lane on Highland? There, there are parallel routes, you know, there's a neighborway just north, there's the new community path. So I, I think for me, there's two major responses. One is that especially in this part of Highland Ave, the connection is incredibly steep. I mean, for anyone who, who's tried to bike up Sycamore Street or School Street, I mean, these are really, really steep streets, and they're also not particularly close to the community path at that point. Second is that Highland itself, it's, I, I don't think we should be thinking about it just as a kind of cut-through that you can take an alternative to. Highland Ave is also home to a lot of small businesses, a lot of neighborhood infrastructure, and it deserves its own protected bike lanes in its own right. So I've, I've been having, I, what I believe are really productive conversations with the administration, I know that other counselors have too, and I'm incredibly thankful to the work that many of the advocate groups have been doing on this. And I also want to say, while this order kind of specifies ending at the Central Hill Campus because that campus is already designed and planned for, I do think also the question of the campus to McGrath is also a place that we should be looking really hard at putting a bike lane in because that is currently sort of a extremely dangerous and confusing area connecting McGrath to, to the campus. Thank you very much.
All right, I have Council Ballantyne, Ba, Klingon, Niedergang would like to sign on to that item. Any further discussion? And Council Scott. Here are no further discussion. This item is laid on the table for approval.
Item number 18 is a communication submitted by Councilor Ewan Campen, updating this council on the January 20th meeting of the Redevelopment Authority as it pertains to the Winter Hill Redevelopment Plan.
Council Ewan Campen.
Thank you, Mr. President. So as the city counselor who serves on the Somerville Redevelopment Authority, I wanted to provide a brief update on our most recent meeting because I think it's very relevant to this city council's consideration of the urban renewal plan for Winter Hill, focused on the Star Market site, and I, I just want to make sure that everybody is kind of kept in the loop and where we are in that. So all of my colleagues will remember, in December, this council, we held a committee of the whole Housing and Community Development to discuss a proposed urban renewal plan for Winter Hill. And at that meeting, Councilor Klingon and another of other counselors raised the idea that they would like to come to a formal agreement of kind of power sharing between the City Council and the SRA, kind of conceptually similar to the memorandum of understanding that we established with the demonstration project at 90 Washington, that would give this council a co-equal vote on some of the key steps of the urban renewal plan. So at our most recent SRA meeting, the, this proposal was kind of introduced by George Proakis, by Eileen McGeadigan, who's counsel to the SRA, and I did my best to kind of summarize the concerns as I understand them, and we had a very kind of interesting, lively discussion. I'm not going to try to fully summarize it, but the takeaway message, my interpretation of it, is that the SRA, I believe, is very amenable to the, the, the idea of working with the City Council and kind of formally inviting our input on various aspects of the steps, but what I heard was a serious reluctance around the idea of giving the City Council essentially a veto, you know, a co-equal vote. And I, I would just characterize the arguments, kind of their two major arguments that I just want to briefly summarize. So the first, I think everyone is well aware that a lot of the concern, the skepticism from the City Council is really focused on our recent history in Union Square and the SRA's, you can, past actions, interactions with the community during that process. So several members of the SRA were really kind of outspoken that they share those concerns, they, the reason that they joined the SRA since that Union Square process was because they share these concerns, and, you know, they feel that the city, that the City Council passed a home rule petition to get a representative on the SRA. We have voted to replace several of the members, and they honestly, you know, feel that they share the kind of commitment to transparency, to kind of, to, to welcoming in the public, making sure that this is a plan that, that is supported by the public, and they, they really want to, they, I, for lack of a better term, that they want a chance to prove that, you know, that, that this is a new SRA that functions differently, is my interpretation. The other argument, you know, more of a formal one, I guess, is that in a certain level, I think, on a certain level, the, the concern is really that if the SRA, if the council has veto power over the SRA, on a certain level, the SRA ceases to exist, basically, you know, for lack of a better term, when it comes to urban renewal. And, you know, this is, this is one of their primary functions, and I, I think there is concern about that. So that is all to say, I think that there is a path forward for the SRA and the council to come to an agreement, but I, I just wanted to, to share back, I'm not sure that like a formal veto is, is something that the SRA as a whole is going to support. So where we left it is that members of the SRA, a kind of subcommittee, a subquorum committee, are working with Ms. McGeadigan to come up with a proposal, and I encourage them to reach out to Councilor Klingon, to Councilor White, to Councilor Niedergang, who are counselors who had raised a lot of these issues, and, you know, kind of hash out something that could then be presented to the full City Council and the full SRA, because I know all of us want to make progress on, on this urban renewal. So again, I don't want to put words in anybody's mouths, but I do want to kind of keep the council apprised of where the SRA is on that process.
On the item, Council Strezzo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, too, Councilor Ewan Campen, do you think that this should be included in, as a discussion in Housing and Community Development in March? Is it ready?
Through the President, thank you, Counselor. So I, I think in terms of timeline, what, what I would say is that once the SRA's council and, and subcommittee has kind of come up with a proposal and has had a chance to discuss it with Councilor Klingon, with Councilor White, with Councilor Niedergang, you know, I, I think there's no point in putting it on an agenda until that, that has happened. So I would sort of defer to, to Councilor Klingon, basically, for once this is in a place where it's, you know, worth discussing with the full council.
So we're not talking in March?
Through the President, I would defer to Councilor Klingon on when that process has wrapped up.
Yeah, it sounds like a discussion for another time. I don't think March is, but we got to talk to, probably have this discussion outside of this meeting.
Okay.
All right, Council White.
Thanks, Mr. President, through you, Councilor Ewan Campen. I think you're doing a great job as our representative on that. I do have a question because it's sort of the, the response may shape sort of my thoughts moving forward. Ordinarily, when an approval of a redevelopment plan is presented to like a city council, and I know this is the way it's been done in the past, there's also a request that we approve the orders of taking, so that not only do you approve the redevelopment plan that lists the properties that have been taken under the plan, but you also basically, at that point, we cede our ability to, you know, serve any further roles as far as the taking of those properties. So the question I have is, in this case, if it's been discussed- So the question I have is, in this case, if it's been discussed, whether the redevelopment authority intends to move forward sort of concurrently with our approval of the redevelopment plan to also have us approve the designated parcels for taking.
So through the president, to councillor White, I don't think that that level of detail has been contemplated yet by the members of the SRA. And again, I would say I am not really privy to kind of the details of what the, what I'd call a power sharing agreement is going to be. My sense is that there was, that the members of the SRA do want to set up a kind of functional an agreeable kind of, an agreeable agreement between the SRA and the city council. The details of that just haven't been fleshed out yet, though.
Okay, I appreciate that through the chair. I think I'm going to call up Mr. Proakis, Director Proakis, myself, just to get a feel as far as what their intentions are. If they don't plan on doing it immediately, then my concerns will be a little bit different if they sort of plan on moving almost immediately after the plan is approved to designate the parcels for taking. Thank you.
Councilor Klingon.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you too, Councilor Ewan Campan. Councilor Kim, thank you so much for the work you're doing on this and for being a representative on the SRA. I think you're a great liaison between the two. I just, I, I'm really excited. I think, you know, I think we can, I think we can come to some sort of agreement. And I do look forward to working with some of my fellow councillors, councillor White, on this. I do know that I did get a communication from Tom Gallagani, to answer Councilor Strezo's question. It may be, you know, we may be able to take it up in March, I'm not sure. But I know a subcommittee was meeting, is meeting on the 17th, and they're going to report to the SRA, present a draft MOA, or at least a draft set of terms. And then they're going to reach out to a few councillors. So, you know, potentially, we could be bringing this back up in March if we should see fit, if we can come to an agreement. And, and, you know, again, I thank you. I do, I understand completely the stance of the SRA. And thank you for conveying those thoughts and concerns really clearly. And I hope that we can all come to an agreement and make this thing move forward. Look forward to it.
All right, any further discussion? Here, none, this item is laid on the table and placed on file.
Item 19 is a communication submitted by councillors Ewan Campan, Davis, Scott and Mbah, providing a regular update on this council's policy, research and community outreach work towards civilian oversight.
Councilor Ewan Campan.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I'll welcome any of my colleagues who'd like to add to this. I just wanted to give a very brief update. As you all know, in December of last year, the city council, for the first time, hired two staffers, a legislative policy analyst named Aream Desina and an outreach coordinator named R. Mason, who were confirmed by this council, specifically to work on legislation to create civilian oversight of the police in Somerville. And councillors Davis, Scott, Mbah and I, because we are not a quorum of any relevant committee, we've been kind of working to oversee their work. And I, now that we're in a public meeting, I just want to give a brief update on the work that we've hired them to do. So on the policy and research, the legislation side, Aream has been researching and crafting draft language, kind of getting the lay of the land of how this has been approached in other communities across the country. And specifically to start to identify what are kind of some of the key policy decision points that the city council is going to need to consider going forward and that we're going to want community input on. And she's also been working with Mason to create a public facing presentation that will be used at community meetings to explain some of the concepts around civilian oversight and what we're hoping to do in Somerville. And also on an online survey that's going to be used to gather input from residents, from stakeholders. And in terms of outreach, Mason has begun laying the groundwork, reaching out to councillors. I hope you've all heard from him, and if you haven't yet had an opportunity to meet. And to identify the names of various stakeholders from across the community to kind of lay the groundwork for more of the public facing outreach. And broadly, the plan is to have two large public community meetings, virtual at this point. The first one is to kind of introduce the concepts of civilian oversight, to bring people in, to get people thinking about this and to start to solicit feedback, questions, to find people who are interested in being involved in this. And then to have a series of smaller group discussions, likely virtual, but it's also possible if there can be less than 10 people, that they could be done socially distanced with councillors invited to these in small numbers. Followed by a second, larger community meeting to kind of synthesize what we've heard from the community and the feedback and what we've done to address that. And I also just want to note, very kind of briefly, and I think all my councillors will appreciate this, that, you know, we've heard already from Mason, as he's begun to do with outreach, that I think expectedly, a lot of the feedback we're getting is broader than just around a specific piece of legislation that we want to write. There are a lot of thoughts and feelings in this community around community safety, around policing, around kind of the local government earning the trust of the public. And so, you know, it is, I just want to be very clear that while we are kind of laser focused on crafting this piece of legislation, it has certainly not escaped any of our attention that this is one very small part of a much larger and ongoing outreach and community process that I think all of us are extremely committed to, and we're still kind of trying to determine what that is going to look like going forward. That's all, thank you.
All right, any discussion, councillor Davis?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Just real briefly, thank you to councillor Ewan Campan for that, for taking that report on our recent work. That was an excellent summary. Just one thing I wanted to add, just for, because it follows up on something that we discussed when the, when the budget for this was originally discussed and approved, was the request from the administration that this be ultimately be a collaborative process and that we, you know, we do work together with the administration, including the solicitors' office. And I agreed, I think we all agreed that that, you know, that was appropriate. I did have a conversation with Director Weber last week, or maybe this week, it's all blurred and together, as well as liaison, recanalo, to express to them that our feeling is that we're kind of pretty much to that point where we've done enough now for it to be meaningful, that we're actually bringing them something that don't want to move too far down the road without, you know, fulfilling that obligation or that commitment that we made to work with them and to draw their input. So we will be, I mean, we're going to set up a meeting in the next week or so to just kind of basically have a more detailed conversation of what you just heard from councillor Ewan Campan and figure out the best, the best ways to collaborate going forward. Certainly, you know, the solicitors' office will, I'm sure will provide some valuable input. Mrs. Desina has been fantastic in her legal research and what she's done so far. But certainly, the expertise of the solicitors' office will be helpful as well as other aspects. So just to, just to close that loop, you know, as we did talk about, that we're moving into that phase of it as well. So, you know, that's, that's about it. Please don't hesitate, you know, if, as councillor Ewan Campan said, if you haven't had a chance to speak with Mason, you know, please do, he's been doing a great job collecting just data, information, contacts. And as always, of course, don't hesitate to reach out to ask if there's questions. We'll make sure, we'll make sure we manage the open meeting considerations depending on the other makeup of the committees. But, you know, but obviously, welcome any questions or input if you have. And if you just feel like you haven't heard from, we're trying to do these updates somewhat regularly. Hopefully, it's regularly enough, but, you know, we're also happy to report at every committee meeting if you like, if you prefer that way. But hopefully, this is, this is meeting everyone's, everyone's wish to stay informed. So that's it, Mr. President, thank you, and thank you again, councillor Ewan Campan.
And Councilor Ballantyne.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I threw you, I guess, to councillor Ewan Campan. I just wanted to be clear that I understood. First of all, thank you very much for the update. Did you say there were going to be two large community meetings? One was to present the issue and then the second one, and maybe take feedback. And then another one was maybe a part two?
Through the president, yes, the idea is basically a first meeting to kind of, these will be virtual, I want to be clear, to kind of introduce the concept of civilian oversight. You know, what we're hearing from the public is that a lot of folks understandably don't understand what it really means. And so to kind of, to both explain how we're approaching this and also to start to get feedback. And then the second meeting will be, once we have heard a great deal of feedback and come up with kind of proposed ways to accommodate and to kind of respond to that feedback into a piece of legislation to bring that back to the community and kind of get refined feedback once we have a more kind of detailed proposal.
Okay, so I would ask you all to consider it maybe a little differently. You know, a lot of how this was presented to us on the defund the police movement was talking about the black and brown neighborhoods in Somerville. And I know for my district, my ward, which houses about a third of the public housing units in the entire city, and I also have a 501 unit with Clarendon Hill, where 75% of the residents, excuse me, 72% of the residents are are foreign born and English isn't their language. How do we, I just think a large forum and also speaking a few foreign languages and having lived in foreign countries, being in a large meeting is not necessarily something, even if it's virtual, that something that I would gravitate into. So what I'm saying is, I would ask that you consider maybe some smaller meetings that allow for people whose language, at first language is not English, to also engage in this because we've been told, or at least the data is, that around the mystic housing and around the Clarendon, they are most dependent on the services of the police. So I have not heard from Mason. This is, I was actually on my list to find out what was going on, so I was happy to see this on the agenda today. And I personally don't think two large forums is enough. And some smaller forums should be had. So that's, that's my feedback.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, if I can just respond.
Please do.
So absolutely, thank you, councillor Ballantyne. No, you have, you have identified many of the key issues that, that we've been discussing with Mason. And I'm sorry if this was not clear. The idea is between those two meetings to have as many small group meetings as we can possibly fit. And I will also just say, one of the major logistical challenges that we have run into is that we were able to hire an outreach coordinator for 19 hours a week. And the outreach that this project actually deserves is more than one full-time person. And it should be longer for, longer than a few months. And that is part of a challenge here is that we need to come up with a program that can be implemented with the budget that we have to deliver, you know, recommendations on a piece of legislation. And at the same time, I could not agree more that the last thing we want to do is kind of, you know, go through the motions of having a community process that doesn't actually engage people. I'll also add, we are absolutely on top of translation. The, the administration's communication department has let us know that they cannot translate for us. They're at capacity, but thankfully, the city council has a dedicated budget on this. And we will certainly be moving forward with getting our materials translated and also always, you know, having translators on, in-person translators for those small meetings. So, no, you, my apologies if I did not emphasize those points, but I could not agree more.
Okay, thank you. So I, when is the deadline for Mason to be reaching out to us?
Through the president, I don't know that there's a formal deadline, but I will, I'll be in touch with him if he hasn't.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Davis.
And thank you for all your work on this.
Councilor Davis.
I think you're muted.
Ah, you're right, sorry about that. Just wanted to add a little bit to councillor Ewan Campan's response, because, I mean, your question is totally spot on. It's in fact exactly what we've been trying to accomplish, right? Is to not look at this outreach process from the normal, through the normal length, the normal way we do it. That was, that was our stated goal, that was the primary objective of the job description that was provided was to help us figure out how not to do the whoever shows up on a weeknight at City Hall, community outreach, right? And Mason has been fantastic in really just making us all, even, even within that, you know, making us question even further, you know, what we thought and how this would make sense and sort of, and organizing why he's, he's reached out to all of the councillors. And I believe he may have sent an email to you on around January 11th, but we'll make sure that he reaches out to you again to, to, to set up these meetings was to find out, you know, who are, who are people within the community that, that are exactly the type of folks you're talking about, that, you know, aren't the ones that show up at City Hall, but are connected, are, are are plugged into other areas of the community. And, and using that entree to then get people into the process, to pull people into the process. So the idea of these smaller meetings is that they can be in languages. And what our hope is to, is to go out and get people who can translate from within the community that are native speakers, that are part of their community, and let them, you know, translate and or even run the meeting to some extent, you know, ideally, if, you know, if we find folks that can do that. So that people feel that this is a discussion that they're having, that we're hearing, rather than us talking to them and presenting to them. So that's, that's how we hope it'll work. It's what Mason's trying to sort of, you know, help us, pull us, pull us into. You know, but it's, as I said to a few folks, if, my, my hope is that if, in addition to we, to having a cutting edge civilian oversight process at the end of this, we learn ways to reimagine our concept of community outreach, then we'll really have accomplished something. Because that's, that's the only way we can do this if we're going to do it right, right? So that's, that's, that's 100% of our focus and why it's, it's why we've structured it the way it is, the way we have, is to try and do those exact things you described.
Thank you for that. And just one final, I've certainly said this in a number of circles, is that 92% of the residents that are Clarendon Hill are women. And the women-led households, it's over 70%, I think, I can't remember exactly the number, but it's over 70% at the, at the mystic housing. And I, if people are going to be talking, we have to allow these people in these neighborhoods, because a lot of people have taken their voice away to speak for these neighborhoods, that, you know, if we do a rough number, 75% of the people at the table should be women and, and women of color that are in this dialogue. And I would ask that we actually hold, you know, collect data so we're really clear who's at the table to make sure that everybody's voice is heard. Thank you.
Any further comments? Before we move forward, I want to just say a couple of things. One, I also have not heard from Mason, I look forward to talking to him. And I hope that the information he is gathering, we use not just the police information, but any information gathered from networking with groups that are very difficult to get ahold of, to see how they feel about a number of items. I think it'd be great to maybe have an after-action report after all this is done, to see what we learned outside of just the civilian review. And in terms of translators, I just have to say that, you know, I've worked with councillor Ewan Campan and Davis on trying to get the Summer Viva program to provide translators for this, not just for the sake of saving money or for the sake of having translators, but to have that entire network of people that Summer Viva works with, involved in this process. So it's frustrating and disappointing that we can't have access to these resources and the individuals that these resources serve on something as important as this. So that's very frustrating, we have the money, we can hire translators. We have the money, we can hire translators, but it's not just about that, it's about the people that the translators serve. So I hope we find something to, on that, to address that issue. I see Counsel Abah has a question.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I guess I will still in texting Counselor Ewan Campen, hoping that he will answer that we don't have to, all of us don't have to show our face on this topic. So, but I guess I'm curious, like you said, you haven't heard from, from him or I am, and then Counselor Ballantyne. I'm just curious, like what else on the council hasn't heard from them?
Well, I think maybe if we could talk about that offline, because we could.
No, they can put it in the chat so that we can collect that data. Like, we can collect the live, you know, I mean, the problem is not just to chat, like, they can, any counselor that hasn't heard from them can leave it in the chat so that we can get that feedback when we have our checking with them, we can convey that information.
All right, well, if anyone has not heard from Mason yet, please talk to Counsel Abah. I have Counsel Strezzo has a question.
Not a question, but you can't put, put that in the chat, because isn't that against open meeting law?
I would recommend that people just contact Counsel Abah offline and, and schedule an appointment. All right, any further discussion? Here and none, this item is laid on the table and placed on file. Next item.
Item number 20 is an order submitted by Counselor Klingon that the Director of Public Space and Urban Forestry appear before this council with an update on the delayed Healy Schoolyard Master Plan and the current implementation schedule.
I'm full client.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President, through you. Excited to say that there have been some developments. We all got a communication later this afternoon from liaison, I'm sorry, yeah, Ms. Weber, from the mayor's office. But that said, I, you know, so I just want to thank the mayor and all the staff for, for really working together to, to recommit to this project, to make sure that it's going to happen in the timeline necessary. People have been really just kind of pulling together and working really hard. So I think we're going to see this, this project happen this year. And, and that's due to the, the mayor's commitment to our community and as well as, as our continued fight in the community's fight for, for an activated, open, beautiful space where it's so needed in my ward. So that said, I'm going to leave this, I want to send this to committee anyway, just to kind of keep an eye on things until the, the bids go out for the, the larger schoolyard project. But that said, I am, I am very happy with, with the direction that things are going with this, and I appreciate all your support. All, all of you, thank you.
All right, Counsel Strezzo would like to sign on, any discussion? Here and none, this item will be laid on the table for approval and referred to housing community development. Next item.
Item number 24 is a communication submitted by Counselor Niedergang, submitting questions, concerns, comments, and ideas regarding police staffing in response to Chief Charles Femenos' memo of January 31, which was presented at the February 1 Public Health and Safety Committee meeting.
Counselor Niedergang.
Thank you, Mr. President. During Chief Femenos' presentation on February 1st, I presented some alternative views and asked a bunch of questions regarding what is appropriate, what is the appropriate size and staffing of the Somerville Police Department. This five-page memo, which I've shared here, which I hope every counselor and interested members of the community will read, this memo presents this question in the larger context of public safety and public health in Somerville. The real question we need to answer is how are funds in our budget best allocated to protect public safety in Somerville? I suggest that there are other unfunded needs in other departments that should be a higher priority for funds than for the police department. In this memo, I also present some alternative ways in which SPD could deploy police officers that could provide greater public safety or save money, which could then be reinvested in other departments to meet critical public safety and essential survival needs for residents in Somerville. So I'm looking forward to discussion on this. I think it's probably going to be relevant for the budget process and the budget discussions on the police department in June. So I'd like that this item be sent to finance, so it can be considered as part of the police department budget in June. Thank you.
Any discussion? Here and none, this item is laid on the table, placed on file, or the copy sent to finance.
Item 26 is an order submitted by Counselor Scott, that this council discuss the costs of placing overhead power and utility lines underground as part of any street reconstruction or resurfacing project, and consider requiring such placement by ordinance in light of the risks and costs of proliferating utility connections and leaning or doubled poles.
Counsel Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is a whole host of issues that we have struggled, as a council, deal with over many years. Doubled poles, leaning poles, hell, we had a pole collapse on a car, thank God nobody was hurt. It is clear, from the lack of action, that any kind of corrective mechanism we have regarding these poles and these overhead utility connections is utterly ineffective. It's been three years now, I'm convinced. So as, one of the very frequent comments I get from people in the ward is noting the extreme difference of being on Somerville Ave versus being on Beacon Street or Washington Street, or any of these other streets that don't have their utilities underground. I know we can do this as a city, because we've done it in some places. I've heard a price tag of a million dollars a mile, I've heard a lot of different things. But when we are doing these full-street resurfacing projects, which also include the sidewalks, that is the optimal, to put things underground. It is sickening to look at Beacon Street and the nightmare that people endured there for a decade in, in a project that has been maligned in, in the press, in community meetings, and our follow-through and execution. It's just, it's been terrible. And then to see the power lines still overhead, and in one notable case, a utility pole sitting smack dab in the middle of a bicycle. It shouldn't require Twitter shaming to get a pole moved. It shouldn't require as much work as it is to get anything corrected here. This should just be part of our process. I know Cambridge passed an ordinance that requires certain things to be done in their street reconstruction projects. If that's what we need to do here, then that's what we need to do. Because simply counting on the design process to include that as a critical part of street redesign isn't getting it done. Having these overhead lines are a hazard to safety in terms of the utility poles that aren't, aren't adequately maintained, and then we can't compel maintenance on. Having these generally lines overhead constrains even the size of trees that we can plant in our city and our sidewalks in public way. So I'm, I'm convinced that the tools we have in our arsenal have not been sufficient. And I would love to see us have a conversation with the engineering department, with, if we do have a chief of streets, with all the relevant departments, and work with the law department to figure out how to put this in ordinance if we have to, because there's no reason we should be doing our streets. And we have 100 miles of streets to do and not put these lines underground. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, Counselor, let's see, Ewan Campen and Ballantyne would like to sign on, Counselor White, you have a comment?
Yes, I do, thank you, Mr. President. I fully agree with the city council from Ward 2 on this, because for a long time in dealing with utilities, we've been banging our head against the wall, and I think it's time to reexamine it. On one, oh, I forget, a while ago anyway, as the good counselor referenced, you know, we've been told that it was, again, going to be prohibitively expensive. So I think it's a great idea to look at it now. And also just in dealing with utilities with the poles that they have, the good counselor mentioned double poles. I remember a number of years ago, I think I introduced an actual ordinance, basically to fine utilities if they had a double pole and they didn't remove it within, say, 30 days of getting notice from the city. But was told by the city solicitor that because of DPU control over utilities, the the proposed ordinance was not valid, not legal. So again, great time to look at this and basically push it to whatever the limit we can go, in my opinion. Thank you.
All right, Counselor Davis would like to sign on, any further discussion? Here and none, this, yes, here and none, this item will be laid on the table for approval and referred to public utilities, public works.
Item number 27 is an order submitted by Counselor Scott, that the city solicitor prepare legislation revoking the enabling legislation for the police reserve list.
Counsel Scott.
Mr. President, I ask, we also read item 28.
Please read item 28 as well.
And item number 28 is an order submitted by Counselor Scott, the city solicitor prepare legislation revoking the enabling legislation for the fire reserve list.
Counsel Scott.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. Good news, we can mark these work complete. We have before us late submissions, items number 85 and 86, which contain the language required to do this. I hope I don't have to belabor this point, but for anybody watching for the first time, and I'm trying to figure out what's happening with our civil service process, it was only in 2008 that the mayor requested the opportunity to use a reserve list for both fire and for police. It was only in 2009 that the first allegations of misconduct, favoritism and nepotism as a result of those practices started to surface. In the decades since, the city has repeatedly lost civil service cases demonstrating that the reserve list was used improperly to favor, to reach certain candidates. And we have complained about this process, we have complained about it over and over again. We even received a very nice letter from the mayor, pinky swearing, to not use the reserve list for police anymore. And I appreciate that, I really did. In which case, there should be no problem with the mayor signing this legislation, which is, as I said, subsequently proposed in items number 85 and 86, which functionally just takes back what the city council, Board of Alderman, and the mayor did in 2008 in enabling the reserve list. The reserve list has not been used for any of the purposes that were laid out in its justification back in 2008. It has not been used to maintain a small reserve of five candidates that are ready to go in the future, when, when, when we need candidates, to avoid any delays in process. We're processing candidates right now that were placed, that they were actually interviewed, called and approved, and given provisional offer letters by the mayor over a year ago. Over a year ago. The delay is not because it takes extra time for these candidates to be processed, it's certainly not from any action in the city council to get these done. It, it is because the process is manipulated. It is because of inefficiencies in how the administration handles them. The only thing that is happening as a result of us having these reserve lists is that time and again, candidates are, I believe, and as documented by civil service, not being treated fairly, not going through a fair and proper process so that candidates further down the list can be, can be reached. So I, we have passed unanimous resolutions on this point in the past. And I would hope that this would be a non-controversial vote to simply adopt the items, like I said, the late items that we have, so that they can be sent to the mayor for signature, and we can just put an end to this entire unfortunate chapter of the city's practice of using civil service reserve lists. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
On the item, Counsel White.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate the hard work that the Ward 2 city council did on this, because I recall when the item was first presented to us by the mayor to establish the reserve list, concerns were raised essentially about the ability to use the list to finagle, for want of a better term. And we were assured that it wouldn't be, and the reasons that were given, and as was stated, you know, it hasn't, it has not been used as it was basically communicated to us what the intent was. So, you know, the time has come, and I'm in agreement with the proposed legislation.
All right, any further discussion? Here and none, these items are laid on the table for approval.
Item number 29.
Counsel Scott.
Mr. President, would you, would you be willing to take items 85 and 86 out of order, which are the, well, those are received communications, so I suppose I'll have to put them in for approval at the next meeting, because they're not, or I can.
Yes, um, let's do it right now. Let's take the two late items out of order for discussion.
That's 85 and 86.
85 and 86, please.
Item 85 is a communication submitted by the city solicitor's office requesting rescission of the adoption of Mass General Law Chapter 48, Sections 59B, C, and D relative to a reserve fire force. And 86 as well is a communication from the city solicitor's office requesting rescission of the adoption of Mass General Law Chapter 147, Sections 11, 12, and 13 relative to the reserve police force.
All right, Counsel Scott.
So on that, the text contained, this is again, this is a communication from the law department, from Solicitor Shapiro, properly formatted, giving us the proper format of the order. So I believe the proper action to take here would be to move the order as submitted within item number 85. The text, which says, "Order the city of Somerville hereby rescends its acceptance of the provisions of 59B, 59C, and 59D of Chapter 48 of the Massachusetts General Law, originally accepted by the Somerville Board of Aldermen on March 13, 2008."
Well, as discussed previously, Counsel Scott, I would prefer these items to go to committee for discussion, just to ensure we don't make any decisions that we regret. I definitely support your efforts on this, and I've had a lot of problems with the reserve list in the past myself. But I would like these to go to committee.
All right, Mr. President, I understood if there's further explanation or exploration of the ramifications, and if there are any active hiring processes in place right now, underway right now, I'd certainly be interested to understand the ramifications. Would you rather these be sent, I guess I would ask the chairs of the committee whether they, they should be sent to confirmational appointments or to legislative matters?
I'll ask the chairs, but I think my, my suggestion would be legislative matters, just because I know confirmations is so backlogged right now with a lot of confirmations and legislative matters, we seem to have a little bit more time these days. Counselor Davis, you have a comment?
No, Mr. President, I would agree with that. And if I, if, given that these were submitted for this evening, and I had no way to anticipate them being referred to this committee, assuming that the solicitor doesn't have the objections to it, I would intend to put them on the agenda for next.
All right, so if there's no further, Counsel Scott, you have a comment?
No, I ask that both items be sent to legislative matters, sir, thank you.
All right, both items are laid on the table, placed on file, and referred to legislative matters. And for good measure, let's take 27 and 28 and refer them to legislative matters as well.
Very good, Mr. President. I would say you're not placing 85 and 86 on file. I don't believe you're just sending those to legislative matters to be considered, correct? All right, very good. Then that moves us along to items, item 29, which is an order submitted by Counselor Scott, that this council pursue a charter or ordinance amendment to expand police and fire interview panels to include a city solicitor and a designee of the Director of Racial and Social Justice.
Counsel Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. And with all respect to Mr. Long, City Council. So the, the issue here is, as people who have followed confirmational appointments for the last three years have seen, we are in a bind. The mayor could choose to allow the city council to review the interview materials, to review the hiring process that is done to ensure that as we take our votes to confirm people into these positions, that the process was undertaken fairly, and that we can review the same materials that the mayor was able to review. That could be very simply done by simply changing the sequencing. of how he handles it. The panel could do their work, and then a provisional offer letter could be provided to each candidate. That offer letter would be provisional, not only on confirmation of the city council, but also on the successful completion of their medical review and their physical aptitude test. We have requested that action multiple times, and the mayor has said in no uncertain terms that he doesn't want that. He wants us to have to exercise our oversight function and our confirmatory obligation that our constituents absolutely expect us to do, simply through an interview, face-to-face chat, without the benefit of being able to review any of the background checks, without the benefit of being able to look at the initial interview questions, listen to those initial responses, understand the larger picture. Because I think the larger picture is important. It's very difficult for us to make a decision without having access to any of that information. Certainly impossible to make a responsible decision. And it's a question that I know that colleagues on confirmation appointments for the last three years have struggled with. And so in a situation where we are dealing with no information or even worse, just the information that can be gleaned from the public documents of decided civil service cases or court cases, we are pursuing logic practically to try to figure out and get to answers that are critically important. So since the mayor could fix this simply through policy and refuses to, and there's no way for us to by ordinance require a change to that policy, the only way to ensure that any member of the city council has visibility into that process is to require that somebody on that hiring and interview panel be a member of the city council, much in the way that we required somebody from the city council to sit on the S.R. Because we had the same kind of concerns about what was happening. So I've also added here, a designee of the Director of Racial and Social Justice. And that could be the director themselves whenever they are hired. Or it could just simply be somebody that the Director of Racial and Social Justice has on staff or a member of the community that is coming to the process with that lens specifically. Because I think it's critically important and is in complete congruence with what the administration has said its stated aims are. So in order to address both equity concerns in the hiring process for our public safety positions, that's fire and police, as well as to ensure that the city council is not flying entirely blind thanks to the policy decisions of the mayor, I am requesting that we undertake this exploration to figure out what to, how to make the hiring panel more inclusive. And so thank you, Mr. President. I would also be happy to have this go to legislative matters.
Half-tag charter reform. Looks like the entire city council would like to sign on to this. Any discussion? Here and on this, items laid on the table for approval and referred to legislative matters.
Item number thirty is a report of the Committee on Confirmation Appointments and Personnel Matters, which met on February second.
Item number thirty will be laid on the table with no vote taken. And before we get into the, Counsel Rosetti.
Yeah, Mr. President, I just wanted to make that statement that our work is not yet completed. So I ask that this item be laid on the table, please.
Very good. And before we get into the committee reports, the time now is ten-thirty. I know that there's a few late items on the agenda. So everyone, please keep that in mind if you plan on sleeping tonight. Next item, please.
Item number thirty-one is a report of the Committee on Finance, which met on February ninth.
Counsel Scott.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. Committee on Finance met. We were in session for an hour and fifty minutes. All members were present. A lot of the conversation was around CPC recommendations for the CPA funding and a transfer of four hundred and thirty-six thousand and some change from the undesignedated fund balance of the CPA into designated CPA reserve accounts, such as taking the CPA money and making sure it goes into the right buckets to fund the recommendations that are made by the CPC. A lot of the discussion revolved around the HELE. I'm glad we've gotten some resolution on that tonight. And after a conversation with the Board for Counselor, I feel very comfortable with the recommendation being made to accept it. Counselor Klingon did speak as a member of the public in the meeting, and I think that was very helpful towards driving this to a timely resolution. In addition, there was conversation about grants being received to fund new opioid recovery navigators. This is particularly in Convent from Column Health. And this is to get people of color with Haitian Creole and Spanish language proficiencies to really address some of the opioid addiction issues in our communities of color. Minor grant for arts council support. And let's see here, some other minor issues. The two largest issues, items was, one was a discussion of funds being appropriated out of the Medical Marijuana Stabilization Fund. Right now, that's the surcharge that the city adds through the host community agreements to the existing medical marijuana operators. Right now, there are about a million dollars in that account. The item being referred out, recommended for approval is allocating one hundred and thirty-one thousand-ish of that money for a bucket of different substance use prevention, education, and overdose and lock zone training, as well as some funds put towards continuing the exploration of the Safe Injection Site or Overdose Prevention Center, as we're calling it now. I recommend reading the attached memo that came with that and watching the discussion. Finally, there was an item for everybody who is continuing to watch the DPW saga, of fifty-two thousand dollars, fifty-two thousand four hundred dollars in prior fiscal year unencumbered invoices. So these are invoices that were not encumbered in, from a previous year's budget. They were basically unknown. They had been sent to another location where they had just never been presented. This is reflection of the effort of Director Saccard in DPW in trying to reform and clean up their invoicing and billing processes. It is not done. This will not be the last batch we receive, and there are invoices here that go back to two thousand and seventeen. So these are people who provided services and materials to the city that have not been paid. So I appreciate all the hard work being done by Director Lathan and Director Saccard. I would like, the entire committee would like to see these people get paid. There was also some discussion about ensuring auditing that these are actual invoices, that the services and materials were delivered and are actually still in service in DPW or were deployed in DPW. There is not currently an internal auditing process. And we do not have yet an inventory tag process to ensure that what is purchased actually stays in the garage or stays at DPW or is used by DPW. Director Saccard is working on it and is looking at an initiative to go through the current inventory of equipment that they have and to establish a tag, track, and depreciation system down there. So it's long overdue, but the work is underway to try to clean up the books in DPW. With that, I would ask that the report be submitted as, or accepted as submitted. Also want to acknowledge that Counsel White was recused on the CPA item relating to the Somerville Museum, and that may require a severing of that one particular item in the report, unless he wished to recuse from voting on the acceptance of the report yet.
Any discussion on the committee report? All right, so I guess first we're going to sever the museum CPA item, which will require a roll call vote to sever. Any discussion? Here and none, please, Mr. Clark, please call the roll on severing the CPA item, which is two-one-one-nine-nine. No way. Well, there's a bunch of CPA items, I guess. So we got the museum CPA item.
This is a roll call vote on severing from the Finance Committee report the sole CPI, CPA item related to the Somerville Museum, which is item number two, which one is it? Two-one-one-two-oh-three? On that motion, Counselor Niedergang.
Counsel White.
Prior to the vote, I think I should give the reason for my, why the reason I refuse myself, and it's because I'm on the Board of Trustees for the Somerville Museum.
Very good. Thank you.
On the motion to sever the, to sever that item from the bounds of the report, Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor White. I don't record. Counselor Ballantyne. Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all eleven councils have voted in favor of severing the committee report in order to take up two-one-one-two-zero-three separately. So the balance of the committee report is now before us.
All right, so we got the regular committee report before us. Counsel Scott, you have a final comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I neglected in my report to thank Counsel Rosetti. Counsel Rosetti has been asking hard questions about DPW finances since before I was elected to this, to this board, to this council. And, you know, I've joined her in her scrutiny since, since getting elected. She asked questions, I think, when people thought she was crazy, when people thought she was putting too much scrutiny on it. And I think in every case, her scrutiny has been borne out. And I think the entire city, I know I certainly owed debt to the work that she did before I arrived and that we've been able to do together. And I think the entire city owes her debt and gratitude for her dedication service on this.
I'm sure there'll be many more tough decisions or tough questions to come as we get more invoices. So thank you, Counsel Rosetti, for not allowing yourself to be gaslit as we discussed in the past. Any discussion on the committee report? Here and none, let's do a roll call on the committee report.
This is a roll call vote on the committee report with the exception of the one severed item. On approval, Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all eleven councils have voted in favor of the approval of the Finance Committee report, with the exception of that one item.
Okay, and now we have a roll call vote on one item?
That is correct, Mr. President. There is, one of the items that was just approved requires a roll call vote, and that is the approval of item number two-one-one-one-nine-eight, which is that appropriation of one hundred and thirty thousand dollars and eight hundred and fifty-three dollars from the Mass, from the Medical Marijuana Stabilization Fund in order to address substance abuse.
All right, any discussion? I'm sorry. Here and none, I did just want to add that I am very happy that this money is being spent like this as an independent counselor. And in my brief shining moment as acting mayor of marijuana, I strongly advocated for this, and I'm very happy to see our revenue go into such a worthy cause. So thank you. Please call the roll.
On the item, Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes, and thank you to the mayor.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all eleven councils have voted in favor of that item. That appropriation has been approved.
All right, and then on the severed item?
This is now a roll call vote on the approval of number two-one-one-two-zero-three, which is the appropriation of eighty-seven thousand dollars and change in CPA money to the Somerville Museum. On that item, Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor White. I don't record a vote for Counselor White. He's recused. Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, ten councils have voted in favor of that item. None are opposed, ones are accused. That item has been approved.
All right, next item.
Next item is item number thirty-two, which is a report of the Committee on Housing and Community Development, which met on February third.
Counsel Strezzo.
All right. Good evening, everybody. So I'm going to focus on, you may view the minutes online, but I'm going to focus on just two big takeaways, in my opinion, on the Housing and Community Development Committee. That would be, we talked about the charter report, and we really, we had some of the, the students from the Kennedy School of Government who worked on the charter report. They, they talked about the process involved in creating it and, and how the racial and social justice recommendations in the charter report could be applied to Somerville. And we also had, we had Police Captain Donovan there, and we had a meeting, members of, we had some other people there, and of course, all members of the committee in attendance. We talked about the processes of the information they gathered and how, what they pulled from the community. But also, the, some of the takeaways of the report were based on three, three recommendations. Incident prevention, to dedicate funding to areas needing safety, and talking about peacemaking, a peacemaker alternative. And then second is alternative response. What happens when nine-one-one is being called? Appropriate responses for such as mental health crises. Talked about, and then third is, is on the other side, if, if, if there, what to do, how to prevent holistic responses like with Middlesex County on, on a program with data transparency. And also talked about the new racial and social justice director and ideas of, of how we can improve this in, in Somerville, meaning like, I don't know, what time is it? Like, yeah, it's almost eleven. So I, I'm trying to do the best summary I can at this, at this point. All the minutes are in there. Also, the saga continues with, with the, the Encore Wind Casino Community Benefits Agreement. As you can see, that went into a couple of orders tonight. But we had Mr. Tom Galgani speak and also, so Directors, and Director George Porwakis to discuss if they found anything on the community benefit agreement. If you remember, way back in, I think, twenty-fourteen or fifteen, Encore Casinos committed to, in arbitration, committed to, I think, fifteen million, nope, ten million per year in Somerville businesses they were supposed to spend, including twenty-five K, twenty-five thousand worth of gift cards and certificates put into the, pulled from, pulled into, put into Somerville businesses. So trying to find out, as it happened, they mentioned Tom, Mr. Galgani. Um they mentioned Tom, Mr. Galgani and uh Mr. Porwakis mentioned that, that uh Encore committed to best efforts on that. So we have some orders and we're going to discuss that next month and find out what best effort means. And also, um let's, what are the next steps and, and find out more information about the process? Um, all of that and the, and more is, is in the committee report and I ask that this committee report be accepted as it is. Thank you very much.
And any discussion on the committee report? Here are none, this committee report is laid on the table and accepted as submitted.
Item number thirty-three is a report of committee on Legislative Matters, which met on February fourth.
Counsel Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh the Committee on Legislative Matters did meet on uh February fourth, all members were present. Uh there were two primary topics of discussion. And the first was the uh ongoing effort to get the Surveillance Technology Ordinance and all of its uh related pieces into place. Uh we made some significant progress, primarily discussing the general use policy, uh which was a policy that the administration owns and that sort of describes the uh effectively for the department heads, what is the ordinance, how do we comply with it, what is our policy and how, how do they have to, um how to operate i- in order to, to comply with the ordinance? Um made some, some changes to that and, and uh there were some related or associated changes that would need to be made to some of the outstanding uh technology impact reports. The, the big outstanding change was to actually incorporate um there, the exist, the police department's existing video uh surveillance policy into the general use policy, so that it's sort of there in one place and it fits within the structure of the ordinance uh properly. And so the administration um suggested that, that we do it that way, or that they do it that way, we totally agreed. Um and uh they committed to providing that uh to, prior to this meeting, which they did. Um but as, as we suspected might be the case, just when you, when you take one document that kind of was, you know, created in its own universe and, and move a lot of it into a document that was created in a different universe, it, it, there's, there's some ambiguities, there's some confusion, there's some clarification that's needed just to make sure that a reader that's not all of us who are actually drafting it can pick it up and understand and be clear. And so I had a conversation with um Liaison Raccinello today, I had made, I set a few pages of just comments and questions and clarifications on it and we agreed that um in, in, in the interest of A, what we anticipated this meeting tonight might, might look like and, and given themselves a little bit of a clock, that has proved out. And also that we felt it was, it was uh fair and appropriate to have the uh Police Department, Lieutenant Di Gregorio has been involved in, in throughout this process, to have uh them participate in, in the conversation of just making some clarifications, making sure that everything lines up the way it's supposed to, particularly because if uh Liaison Raccinello and myself were to figure out how we thought it should be worded, we might completely miss something that, that, you know, the, the Police Department intended and, and it is their, ultimately their policy, uh and, and we wanted to make sure that they had a voice in that process. So we left that there. Um you'll see in the agenda that the outstanding impact reports were withdrawn and revisions were submitted this evening. Uh that has the benefit of starting the clock for review again. Um I fully anticipate, this will be on the agenda for next Thursday, I fully anticipate that um we will wrap this up on Thursday. And there's, from my perspective, we're, we're not, there aren't big gaps in, in, you know, the substance, it's really just a matter of making sure that we're all, that what, where we all are is, is what is reflected in the, in the wording. So uh I anticipate that that will happen uh next week and, and you know, barring some of the surprises, uh we will have this all uh wrapped up and ready to go for, for the following meeting. There's also another item on the agenda, we mentioned briefly in the meeting, um on tonight's agenda, to uh, to make an, an adjustment to the ordinance itself, um to allow the fire department to have the same benefits of extraneous circumstances if there's a, if, you know, the technology they want to use to save somebody's life or to potentially save lives in a fire. They, you know, they felt that might be appropriate as well, so we will take that up at the next meeting as well and, and hopefully have everything wrapped up. So that's the takeaway on that. The other item we uh discussed are the, called the, the, the tear gas uh ordinance or the ban on tear gas, which has actually expanded into more a um, an ordinance regulating um chemical substances and projectiles. Counsel Ewan Campen made some uh suggestions uh based on conversations he had, the administration provided to respond, and we also were joined by a lawyer from the National Lawyers Guild, I believe, um who, who provided some input. It was really a, a, a discussion to move, to move the discussion along, um and we anticipate getting a, a written, um, some written legal analysis from Attorney Foyer, who was uh the, the attorney, the Counsel Ewan Campen sponsored to speak. Um he had a, a little bit of a different view on a few issues that, than the Solicitor's Office, at, at least their initial view. Um they didn't have a, you know, a full opportunity to review all of the issues because this was moved pretty quickly before, in the days before the meeting. So want to give, we wanted to, uh, the committee wanted to make sure that everyone had time to digest those issues, the Solicitor's Office had time to, to fully look, look a- at those. Um and, and now having heard Attorney Foyer's positions as well, um you know, reflect on those. So uh that, that was left to committee and, and we'll, we'll take that up again once we have that um, the written input from Attorney Foyer and the Solicitor's Office has had a chance to, to review that, but I hope we'll be able to move forward um as well. Generally speaking, um both the administration and the committee felt that that, that ordinance is, is, it's, you know, it's in really good shape, it's a great ordinance, even, even with a few outstanding items. Um so, but we just want to make sure that we get those, those cleared up. Um and that was really the crux of it. So uh with that, I uh, oh, and there's one other thing I want to do, after the report, somebody remind me, I want to actually discharge an item and uh request that it get referred to uh Housing Community Development, um which I discussed with uh Counsel Strezzo. So after this, um after this motion, make sure I don't forget to do that. So uh with that, Mr. President, um I uh request that the report be accepted as submitted.
All right, Counsel Davis wants to accept the committee report as submitted, any discussion? Here are none, well, I guess um, well, yes, let's just lay this on the table for approval. And Counsel Davis, I think you wanted to discharge something, I just wanted to-
Yeah, so there's a lead item, Mr. President, that I submitted, um if we could take that up at this time. Um and it's essentially just to, to discharge, uh where is it? Now I've lost the number because I was doing other work. Mr. Long, Mr. Clark, if you have that, I would appreciate the, the assist, but if not, I'll, I'll take it up here.
We'll see who finds it first, but I'm betting you.
If I may, it's item two one zero one three six.
Beautiful, thank you, two one zero one three six. Um and that, that was an, an, an order submitted um a, a while back by, originally by Counsel Ewan Campen to um cap, or to, to support several restaurants by Cap'n fees charged by third-party delivery services. Um certainly related to the, the various items that um Chair Strezzo mentioned earlier in the evening and I reached out to her to suggest that if, if she'd like, we could discharge this i- item and, and send it to Housing Community Development, so that she could have them all together there and uh I'm happy to do that. And so I would make that motion, that two one zero one three six be discharged from Legislative Matters with the intent that it be then referred to Housing Community Development.
On the motion and discussion?
Me, Mr. President, really? Thank you. Um I do want to point out that there is some state legislation happening, so we have that in, in addition, but let's explore this uh item in committee and see what happens. Thank you very much. And thank you, Chair Davis, as well for this uh Legislative Matters.
All right, on discharging the item, any further discussion? Here are none, please call the roll to discharge the item and refer it to Housing Community Development.
On discharging the item, Counselor Niedergang?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne?
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen?
Yes, to discharge.
Counsel, Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo?
Yes.
Counselor Klingon?
Yes.
Counselor Mbah?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti?
Yes.
And Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. President, all eleven councils have voted in favor of discharging that item from Legislative Matters Committee and now you intend to move it to Housing and Community Development?
Yes, I will, I will just refer to Housing Community Development, thank you.
Very good, thank you.
All right, uh, next item?
Next item is item number thirty-four, which is a report of committee on Public Health and Public Safety, which met as a committee of the whole on February first.
Public Health or is it about Public Utilities was next?
Uh Public Health and Safety is next.
For Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh Committee on Public Health and Public Safety did meet on February first, it was a committee of the whole, all members were present. Uh we discussed two, uh, two issues overall, one was an update on the COVID response. Um the minutes are very detailed, uh the, the one main takeaway that I would note was that um that the mayor was present and we thank him for his, for his input. Um we discussed the vaccine situation and the rollout, why specifically there were no sites in Somerville, um why, uh you know, why, why we seem to be behind the eight ball in terms of information and, and, and the mayor's response was that he, uh he doesn't know. He shows that frustration and that, that the state had provided no information, little to no communication with municipalities, um no consultation prior to any of the initial uh sites. And the, at the time, the one hundred doses per week of vaccine that uh the city's been provided, uh were being um dispersed to uh senior citizens through, uh, through the Department of Public Health. And uh obviously, we've since heard about the, um, the, the city's vaccine site that has been set up, so that's a, a later information after this meeting. Um the other main discussion was that the, the Chiefs of Police and Fire discussed with the council, the staffing requirements. Uh this was a long discussion, it related to uh a lot of the budgeting questions we have and, and tangentially to um the recent requests for approval of uh police officers by the administration. And it was an opportunity for members to ask questions about uh the police staffing, police budgeting, how those divisions related to discussions we had uh last summer during the budget season. Uh the minutes are detailed and of course, uh that uh full discussion is available on uh, you know, recording, so I'm in charge, folks, to go take a, take a watch, um if, if they're interested in, in hearing the details on that. So with that, Mr. President, I will request that the report be accepted as submitted.
Any discussion on the committee report? Here are none, this committee report is laid on the table and accepted as submitted.
Item number thirty-five is a report of committee on Public Utilities and Public Works, which met on February ninth.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh through you, yes, so the uh Public Utility, Public Works Committee met on February ninth, all members were present. Also present was uh Ms. Weber from the mayor's office, Jess Bosbrook from Engineering, Luisa from OSPCD, Luisa Olivera, um DP representatives from DBW and uh Parks and Recreation, as well as several members from, representatives from EverSource. The bulk of the conversation uh was around a few items related to EverSource, their representatives were there to answer questions, um mainly about a few incidences uh that ultimately uh were by the book, but essentially um left questions of notification and how we could do better procedurally. Um we are working with EverSource to uh improve, uh they, they have a, a great new customer relations person that's really kind of making the effort to uh hopefully open lines of communication with us, the city. So, so those items were discussed and you can, can watch that video and then read, read the report. And then also, uh related to that, that same group was the uh, the gas leaks at seven twenty-one, Somerville Avenue, a um we were told from one of the representatives that a gas leak was fixed on White Street, which is right nearby seven twenty-one Somerville Ave, and they're going to retest the seven twenty-one Somerville Ave area since that leak's been fixed and hopefully uh perhaps that will, um, that, you know, the low reading will be explained by that. Otherwise, um we're going to still continue to pursue the situation down there and uh compare notes with um, with HEAT and National, um sorry, EverSource, uh so that we can kind of get on the same page, like, like in terms of the readings and the classification of the leaks and get that squared away and hopefully uh figure out what's killing the trees down there. That is all in the report. Um and with that, I ask for this committee report be accepted as submitted.
Any discussion on the committee report? Here are none, the committee report is laid on the table and accepted as submitted.
Item number thirty-six is a report of committee on Traffic and Parking, which met on February eighth.
Counsel Niedergang?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh Councillors Ballantyne and Klingon were present. The committee discussed a dozen different items regarding safe streets and traffic calming and a number of done, a number of dangerous streets and intersections around the city. The minutes are detailed and reflect those items. Uh we were fortunate to have uh Ally Claman from the Mobility Department present to review progress on some of the projects which she manages, uh including the ones uh on Mystic Avenue that Counsel Strezzo asked about earlier in the meeting. Uh in this committee report, I want to highlight three issues that were discussed at some length at the meeting. Uh A, traffic enforcement by the Somerville Police Department. B, traffic calming and other infrastructure on streets around the five new green line extension stations that will be opening at the end of this year. And C, city employee driver training. So we had Deputy Chief Chris Ward and the head of the Somerville Police Department Traffic Division, Lieutenant Jim Bolito, present to address issues about traffic enforcement by the police department. They shared a presentation which is uh available uh in the agenda in the minutes and spoke about SPD's approach to traffic enforcement. Uh I won't attempt to review what they said, there are lots of details, you can see it in the slides and the minutes. I will say that I did not find the presentation or the SPD's approach to traffic enforcement to be satisfactory. From what was said, it is not clear to me or to others in the community who watched the meeting and communicated to me afterwards that SP leaders understand the city's Vision Zero policy. Vision Zero states that all traffic fatalities and serious injuries are preventable and that no tra, no crash that injures a person is unavoidable or inevitable due to driver operator error. Uh the committee will be following up on this initial discussion with the gentleman from the Police Department at a future meeting. The second item uh of major discussion focused on city employee driver training. Assistant Director Personnel Ellen Collins and Assistant Director Eric Weisman from the Department of Public Works told us they are planning a driver training program that will train all city workers who drive city vehicles, not just DPW staff. Mr. Weisman also said that he is looking into speed limiting technologies for DPW and other city vehicles. I will be hearing more about both of those things in the future. The longest discussion was about traffic calming and other infrastructure work on the streets around the five new green line extension stations that will open towards the end of this year. Mr. Rossen and Viola Augustine from the Mobility Department showed fifteen slides with detailed information about the work that has been done or is planned around those stations, as well as around the community path extension. I would uh encourage every councillor to review those slides, there are a lot of information in them. And in particularly, I would ask the ward councillors, if you have a uh station in your ward, uh please take a look at it, uh see if you have any questions or concerns. Uh we kept this in committee and we will take up this item again in the next month or two. So that concludes my report and I ask that it be approved as submitted. Thank you.
Any discussion on the committee report? Here are none, the committee report is laid on the table and accepted as submitted.
It brings us to item number thirty-seven, which is the first communication of the mayor.
Uh okay, Counsel Scott, do uh have any suggestions for all these financial items?
Uh yes, sir, I would request that we waive the readings of uh thirty-seven through forty and have them referred to, uh have them referred to committee.
All right.
And then we'll go from there.
Do you know, discussion, uh items thirty-seven through forty, the way, readings are waived or refer to the Finance Committee?
Uh, thank you.
Item forty-one is requested, the mayor questioned the use of a hundred and one thousand seventy-four dollars in available funds in the E nine one one personal services account to fund the retroactive FY twenty-one salary- to fund the retroactive FY twenty-one salaries and benefits pursuant to the agreement with, uh, the Call Takers Dispatchers Union.
Uh, Councillor Scott.
Uh, thank you, sir. This is another, uh, this is maybe a little confusing one, because once again, this is, uh, something that would normally come from a stabilization fund. Um, but my understanding is that this is the second half. We've already funded, uh, some, some part of the second settlement, and this is funding the other part of it. So I would recommend approval tonight on this one.
Okay, uh, Councillor Scott moves to approve. Any discussion? Here and none, let's do a roll call vote on this item.
This is a roll call vote on, uh, Id- Agenda Item Forty-one, appropriating funds for, uh, the Call Taker, uh, Contract. On that item, councillor Niedergang.
Yes.
Councillor White.
Yes.
Councillor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Councillor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
Councillor Davis.
Yes.
Councillor Strezzo.
Yes, woo-hoo!
Councillor Clingan.
Yes.
Councillor Mbah.
Yes.
Councillor Scott.
Yes.
Councillor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Councillor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all eleven councillors have voted in favor of that item. That appropriation has been approved.
Okay, next item.
Item forty-two is requested, the mayor requested appropriation of seventy-three thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars from the Receipts Reserve for Appropriation Parking Meter Receipt Account to the Parking Professional Technical Services Account to facilitate the city's parking study.
All right, Councillor Scott.
Uh, on this one, we had previously, uh, taken multiple years allocated, uh, funds in the Professional Technical Services line for this parking study to happen. It never happened. Uh, this is just simply using parking meter money to fund it, uh, and I'm excited. So I would ask approval on this tonight. And also, just, uh, as a note, the, all of the moving around of free cash to, uh, replenish certain funds that were drained for COVID purposes and other unrelated purposes, uh, I expect there's going to be a lot of questions about the current state of our free cash, which is why I'm sending all those to committee, and I do believe Director Bean will be at our next meeting. But, uh, for this particular parking study, I recommend approval tonight.
All right, Councillor Scott moves to approve on that. Councillor Niedergang.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank councillor Scott for recommending approval on this. I'm very anxious to get this parking study going. We actually, we got off, councillor Bondi are on this committee. We got off to a great start last year, and then it was put on hold, uh, just about a year ago due to COVID. So, uh, there was good leadership from the Summerstat, uh, Department and the right people in the room, and I, I felt like, you know, there's, um, some real hope of getting some very progressive parking policies in place with this committee's work. So thank you, councillor Scott, for, uh, for moving this.
Councillor Ballantyne and Councillor Strezzo.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I just have a question. Is, is that the total cost of the parking study, seventy-three thousand?
Uh, yes, indeed.
Okay, um, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pres-
The, uh, the documentation of everything that's included in the study, including the quote, is in the Nelson and Ariard, uh, Parking Study Proposal attached to the item.
Uh, Councillor Strezzo and Councillor Mbah.
Oh, well, I had, uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, yes, that was my question, just like a two-sentence summary of me catching up on this. What is the parking study about?
It's in the document. Um, and it's, yeah, basically just-
Quick summary.
A citywide, uh, using of our, the state of, uh, our demand on parking and the supply on parking.
Thank you.
All right, Councillor Mbah.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to express my gratitude also to Chairman Scott, you know, for moving this forward. And, uh, you know, I'm looking forward to the good old days where I can hang out with councillor Niedergang and, and talk about the, the, the good times, when, when some of you used to be, you know, uh, full of, uh, you know, uh, good people.
Remember those halcyon days of early twenty-twenty-one? Any further discussion? Here and none, uh, come, uh, Mr. Clerk, we can, uh, lay this on the table and do a roll call at the end, right?
That is correct.
All right, this item will be laid on the table for approval.
Item forty-three is requested, the mayor requesting appropriation of sixty-two thousand dollars in the Capital Stabilization Fund to cover the costs, the, to cover an increase in the cost of a new fire pumper.
Councillor Scott.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. We already, uh, authorized, I think, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this fire pumper, and when the quote came back, that was too low. So this is just, um, an extra sixty-two thousand dollars to cover it.
All right, any comments, any discussion? Councillor Scott moves to approve. This item is laid on the table for approval.
Mr. President, I, if, if the, uh, council will indulge me, I would request a separate roll call vote because it's a stabilization fund.
Uh, yes, of course. See, that's why I asked. Uh, yes, let's do a roll call vote on item number forty-three.
On approval of item forty-three, councillor Niedergang.
Yes.
Councillor White.
Yes.
Councillor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Councillor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
Councillor Davis.
Yes.
Councillor Strezzo.
Yes.
Councillor Clingan.
Yes, sorry.
Councillor Mbah.
Yes.
Councillor Scott.
Yes.
Councillor Rosetti.
Yes.
And councillor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all eleven councillors have voted in favor of that item. That, uh, item has been approved.
Very good. Next item. Councillor Davis moves to waive the readings of items number forty-four to fifty and refer them to the Legislative Matters Committee.
That brings us up to item number fifty-one.
Councillor Rosetti moves to waive the readings of items number fifty-one through Jesus seventy.
Mister, Mister-
Councillor Rosetti.
Mister, Mister, um, yeah, thank you, Mr. President. On item fifty-one, um, and then there are five others later on on the agenda. For promotions within the Fire Department, it was brought to my attention today by the administration. There is a sense of urgency. I needed to check with the clerks and yourself, Mr. President. I've been, um, seeking dates where I can have a quorum with my committee. It appears that the eighteenth would work. Um, the problem, though, is I need two clerks because we will be moving into executive session, and there's also legislative matters that evening. Chair Davis has assured me he should be able to control it with one clerk. So if, um, yourself and Clerk Lon could let me know tomorrow if the eighteenth will work, I'd be grateful to you. I'm just trying to coordinate this meeting. It's urgent according to the administration, and, uh, the eighteenth seems to be able to work for my committee.
Okay, we could discuss this tomorrow. I'll give you a call, and I'd love to go on an angry rant about this right now, but it's eleven twenty, so I'll let it go for today.
Okay, but, okay, but I just also want to hear from Mr. Long or Mr. Forsele, um, Rose, whomever, just to assure me I could have two clerks.
Yes. All right, well, we'll do, we'll figure this out. Um, but until then, items number fifty-one through seventy will be referred to the Confirmation of Appointments Committee.
Mr. President, that brings us up to item number seventy-two, which is an item of new business. It's, uh, application for a drain layer to renew his license.
Councillor White.
Move to approve.
Councillor White moves to approve. Any discussion? Here and none, this item is laid on the table for approval.
Item seventy-three is a communication sued by Rachel Kester submitting comments regarding a protected bike lanes.
This item is laid on the table and placed on file.
Item number seventy-five is a request of the mayor. Requesting appropriation of fif- Oh, I'm sorry, we dealt with seventy-five, yes. Uh, we're up to seventy-six, which is another request of the mayor requesting use of twenty-seven thousand two hundred and eleven dollars in available funds in the Library Salaries Account to establish the position of a manager of branch services.
Councillor Scott.
Haven't had a chance to discuss this with the Director of Libraries yet. I guess they could, uh, send to committee.
All right, this item will be sent to the Finance Committee.
That brings us up to item number seventy-seven, which is, of course, the mayor having to do with the Surveillance Technology Impact Report.
This item will be referred to Legislative Matters.
Seventy-eight is a request of the mayor requesting to withdraw the Surveillance Technology Impact Reports that are currently before the Committee on Legislative Matters.
Any discussion? Here and none, this item is laid on the table for approval.
Seventy-nine is request, the mayor requesting amendment to the Surveillance Technology Ordinance to permit the Fire Department to use surveillance technology in exigent circumstances.
Any discussion? Here and none, this item is laid on the table for approval.
Mr. President.
Let's, let's refer to Legislative Matters.
Thank you, sir.
Very good. Item number eighty is the first of the fire, uh, appointments that councillor Rosetti just referenced.
Councillor Rosetti.
I move to waive items eighty through eighty-four and refer to Confirmation of Appointments, and pray for me people. I don't know how many more meetings in a month I can do.
All right, any discussion? Here and none, these items are referred to Confirmation of Appointments.
Mr. President, uh, there are, we moved to late items that have been submitted, and there's a few.
Okay.
We have-
If you could read, I know I have several, Mr. Clerk. I apologize. Could you read the, uh, four appointments, uh, together?
Certainly. Um, there is a communication from, uh, councillor McLaughlin in his capacity as president, appointing Beverly Schwartz, Lucas Shaber, Jessica Lieberman, and Crystal Turner to the Charter Review Committee.
And, uh, there's another one as well?
There is also a communication from councillor McLaughlin, acting in his capacity as president, appointing City Councillor William White as the council's representative to the Charter Review Committee.
All right, just to give people an update, uh, the selections for the Charter Review Committee have been made by myself, the mayor, and the, uh, school committee chair. I'm very happy, uh, with the selections. It was actually a very difficult decision. There were a lot of great candidates. Um, and I am happy to discuss these with anybody if they're interested. I think they're great candidates. Uh, councillor Ballantyne, they're seventy-five percent women, so I hope I have your approval. And, um, and I also was very happy to put councillor White on this. I think he's probably the most, uh, well-versed in the charter, and he has the, um, goddess Athena behind him in his images, so I think that's a sign of wisdom. Any discussion?
Precisely.
Here and no discussion, these items are placed on file, laid on the table, placed on file.
Item, uh, the next item is a resolution submitted by councillor McLaughlin to the administration to allocate funding for a school committee clerk in the fiscal year twenty-two budget.
All right, so it's usually not our practice to, uh, make requests for the school committee. Uh, however, this was something I discussed with both the superintendent and the chair of the school committee. Um, as some of the past presidents know, uh, the city, the school committee does not have a clerk. Oftentimes, the superintendent, uh, takes the role in minutes, and there's also a secretary who has many other responsibilities outside of being a clerk, um, to do this. So I'm hoping this year, uh, with the approval of the mayor and support from the school committee, that we can get them a basic service, which is a clerk. So this item will be, any, if there's no discussion, this item will be laid on the table for approval.
Very good. Next is an order submitted by- I'm sorry.
Councillor Ballantyne had a question.
Um, I'm sorry, a comment. I think it's a fabulous idea, um, and thank you for putting this forward. The school committee does, does need, uh, help, and especially with everything they've had to deal with this past year. I can only imagine that, uh, uh, keeping up with that has been, um, difficult. Thank you.
I agree. Thank you. Next item.
Next is an order submitted by councillor McLaughlin, the Director of Health and Human Services. Prioritize homelessness outreach workers for upcoming COVID-nineteen grant funding to better address the increased demand for homeless services.
Could you read the next item as well?
And next is an order from councillor McLaughlin that the Director of Health and Human Services develop a plan for a warming center or engagement center to address increased homelessness in the community due to COVID-nineteen.
All right, so these are just two items, just to speak briefly on them, that I regret not having introduced earlier. I thought we were doing a whole lot more to address homelessness issues, particularly with all the grant items that we have, uh, all the, all those federal grant money we have to address COVID, uh, which has gone to other items that are important, but, um, with the recent death of a homeless person in East Somerville because they lacked a place warm to go to, um, and the difficulty of coordinating with the increased homeless population in the city, I think these are very important. Uh, councillor Ballantyne would like to sign on, and I would like to, uh, refer these to the Public Health and Safety, uh, Committee for discussion. Uh, so seeing councillor Davis would like to sign on, and seeing no further discussion, these items are laid on the table for approval and referred to Confirmation to, uh, Public Health and Safety.
Uh, next, and I believe last, is a resolution suited by councillor McLaughlin, the Traffic Commission examine using the, the PsychTrick pedestrian safety method that's deployed in St. Paul, Minnesota, to encourage drivers to stop for pedestrians that are crossing the street.
Uh, people want to Google this. It was brought up by a constituent of mine, and I told her I'd put this in, and basically, uh, it's very similar to, um, the speed limit signs you'll see. You know, it's a sign that tells you the speed limit you're going and encourages you to slow down. Uh, it's similar to that, except, uh, cities would put a, uh, weekly report of how often people stop to let people cross the street. Uh, so it has kind of a mental effect of challenging people to, uh, respect the pedestrians right away and kind of giving the positive reinforcement that, oh, look, we have, uh, we, we've approv-, we, we have increased our capacity for pedestrian use. So look it up. I won't go on any further, but I'll lay this on the table for approval and refer this to Traffic and Parking.
Very good. Mr. President, I am not aware of any other items before the council this evening.
Okay, well, well, let's do a roll call vote on all items that are laid on the table.
Oh, Mr. President, my, my apologies. There is a communication from the mayor's office that was responding to the earlier order, uh, from councillor Clingan with respect to the Healy Schoolyard Project. There is a response from the mayor's office that councillor Clingan referenced, and that should be added. Uh, I will add that as a late item on the agenda.
Okay, any discussion? Here and none, this item is laid on the table and placed on file.
Now we are ready for a roll call vote. This is a roll call vote on the motion to approve items three through thirteen, seventeen, twenty, twenty-two, and twenty-three, twenty-five through twenty-nine, thirty-two through thirty-six, forty-two, seventy-two, seventy-eight, and the late items submitted by councillor Ballantyne and McLaughlin, and place items sixteen, eighteen, and nineteen, twenty-one, twenty-four, seventy-three, seventy-four, and the late appointments by councillor McLaughlin, and that late, uh, communication from the mayor's office that I just referenced, place all those on file.
All right, please call the roll.
Roll call vote on that motion, councillor Niedergang.
Yes.
Councillor White.
Yes.
Councillor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Councillor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
Councillor Davis.
Yes.
Councillor Strezzo.
Yes.
Councillor Clingan.
Yes.
Councillor Mbah.
Yes.
Councillor Scott.
Yes.
Councillor Rosetti.
Yes.
And councillor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all eleven councillors have voted in favor of that motion. That motion has been approved.
All right, with no further business before us, councillor Clingan moves to adjourn. Please call the roll on adjournments.
On adjournment, councillor Niedergang.
Yes.
Councillor White.
Yes.
Councillor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Councillor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
Councillor Davis.
Yes.
Councillor Strezzo.
Yes.
Councillor Clingan.
Yes.
Councillor Mbah.
Yes.
Councillor Scott.
Yes.
Councillor Rosetti.
Yes.
And councillor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, pleased to report that all eleven councillors have voted in favor of adjournment.
We all made a wise decision. Good night, everybody.